That sound like a beer can.
Chair will call the February 22, 2022, special city council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is number 2022-038, annual appropriation ordinance of the city of Springfield, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning March 1, 2022 and ending February 28, 2023. Chair will entertain a motion to recess a special meeting in the city council to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2023 municipal budget.
Move.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the council regarding the proposed fiscal year 2022 municipal budget? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the special meeting in the city council.
Move.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-038 on final passage.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Chair will entertain a motion to move for discussion, I guess. Is that correct, counsel? Or just go through the amendments? Have to hit your button, sir.
I'll make a motion. Do we entertain the amendments?
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Moved in second to entertain the amendments. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody has on their table this evening a copy of the 23 amendments. And one of the amendments, amendment number 18, deals with commuter, college graduate attraction program. And I would like to withdraw that amendment this evening, however, with an understanding that I will continue to work with you, Mayor, and your office and any alderman that is interested in this particular initiative. I think I've got a little bit of the cart before the horse. I think the whole idea of attracting commuters to the community, meaning people that can work from anywhere, that may be in a different city and tired of it, that we could attract them here, or a recent college graduate. There's so many opportunities there, but I think we'd better flush it out first and then come back with a funding mechanism. And I would just ask for your consideration in the future. And thank you.
Very good. So that number 18 will be withdrawn? Any other discussions on the amendments before we start? Amendment number one, requested by Office of Budget Management, is really a technical change regarding a typo in the regular salary line and reduces the corporate fund by $136,399 regarding the Department of Human Resources. Any discussion on that?
Move to pass.
Second.
They're moving second. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Same proposed amendment, I should have done them together, again, is a technical one regarding a typo in fleet acquisition line, reduces the capital equipment fund by $439,000 for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
They're moving second to adopt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Proposed amendment number two regarding OBM, Office of Budget Management, regarding the library fund, who increased $72,329 in order to receive a grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
They're moving second to adopt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Amendment number three from Alderman Hanauer, and this is a multi-purpose one that affects several funds, but the main gist of it is to remove the funding for the one-stop funding, for the one-stop shop, moving the offices to the first floor of the municipal center west. And it defunds that request.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
They're moving second to adopt. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer and then Alderman McMiniman.
Well, look, I'm not opposed to the one-stop shop. I think that we need to put all our efforts in getting the online, people being able to do things from, you know, online rather than coming down here. That's a wave of the future. What I would suggest is we put all our efforts towards that, and then let's review this and see if a one-stop shop is necessary at that time. You know, I think that what we'll find is that we won't have as near the people come down here as what's necessary. And that's the reason why I'm asking to delay the one-stop shop.
Alderman McMiniman.
So there's three elements to this proposal, and one of the spending elements draws down the water fund and one draws down the electric fund. Does that reflect what activity will be taking place on the first floor, that we're going to rearrange where the electric and water commercial offices and that kind of thing?
And Alderman, I'm not sure. I just asked for all the spots. I was under the assumption when we did this that this was a 1.2, 1.5 million dollar deal, and it just came out to this amount in only these areas. I thought that we were getting OPEC and some others that were going to, but apparently, and I'll have to leave it up to Director McCarty to explain how all this went.
Director McCarty, want to give an overview?
Sure. A lot of this, really, Public Works and Nate Bottom are overseeing it, but we talked to him when we put our budget requests in and the mayor wanted the one-stop shop in, just to see what the cost would. And then we split it out amongst the users of the building, which, of course, is city corporate and the utility. And between the three of us allocated the dollars that were necessary, we thought, or Nate thought, to get the project done. So I don't know, and Nate can answer this, I'm not sure if there are some residual dollars that might be necessary after this year, but it was my understanding this pretty much would take care of the project, because I know Nate was working to try and trim costs off of it. Am I saying that right, Nate?
Yes, Director Bottom can give an update. I think the council, everybody understands, we did have an architectural analysis being done right now that was passed by the council. So if you'd like to give an update.
That's correct. Well, our estimate was around $500,000 approximately for the cost to convert it to the one-stop shop. We've tried to adjust it a little bit to make some cost savings for it. But it's obviously to improve safety for the employees as well as the public, trying to keep everything on the first floor. And yeah, Dave Leonati's been working on the design, and we're fairly close, ready to present it. Like I said, we did try to cut costs. It is a cost sharing between CWLP Electric and Water Division with adjustments to ISD, shipping ISD and some of the commercial office up to the third floor and bringing down Public Works down to the first floor that offer those services to the public.
And Director Bottom's right. Part of it is to make sure everybody's on the first floor that has public access. That's the main purpose, so we don't have individuals wandering the municipal center west. And try to make it efficient as possible with regards to that. But either way, counselor doesn't have to come back for an ordinance, even if we appropriate it, there's an ordinance that would have to come back to the council for approval.
Correct. In other words, this, remember, this is the funding in the appropriation ordinance, but there would still have to be, for example, if there were work to be done, it would be bid, come back to the council, that sort of thing, and they have to be reviewed and voted on. This authorizes spending, but then there's the contractual side, which requires separate ordinances.
Alderman McMiniman and then Alderman Williams.
There's a follow-up question, Nate. So we've got our information technology office on the first floor, and that takes up a fairly large area. They're going to move out of there, as I understand it. So is part of this money to recompose those offices on the first floor?
That's correct. So building and zoning, in essence, would move down to where ISD is, and then they would move up to the third floor. So that's to do the reconfiguration for their offices on the third floor as well as setup for building and zoning on the first floor. Then the housing division was going to go where the administrative commercial office is, kind of on the north side of the building on the first floor, and then the administrative staff for CWLP Building would go upstairs to the third floor.
On that basis?
retrofit that.
I'd be a yes vote for this, because we're going to have to, another ordinance is going to come back for the construction part of this. So we're not, we're just setting aside the money, and then we get a second chance to say yes or no down the road. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're going to have to come to city council, because it's going to be over the threshold in order to do the improvements for whomever the contractor would be.
Alderman Williams and Alderman Hanauer and then Alderwoman Lakeisha Purchase.
Well, you know, I appreciate you, Nate. I like the aspect of everything on one floor and at the bottom and in view of what we live in today and what's happening. And I mean, I don't know if you've had previous incidents or situations where security or anything had to be called, or loose people in the building or things like that, but I do like the ideal of people getting in as quickly as possible, one area concentrated and not all through the building. But what concerns me more is not just this particular action that we're talking now, but overall going online. I represent a lot of constituents that if you ask them, do they got the internet? And they show you, you know, the cell phone that they got from the check cashing, you know, or one of those type of units. So it's not a proper device to do a lot of the transactions that they tend to claim, this is my internet and this is how I apply for jobs, do medical appointment, you know, all those things. That's not this council's fault, but I wouldn't want to support anything that would stop them from having the opportunity of coming down and doing a face-to-face, because that's what's really going on, you know. As society moves and we maybe improve our broadband, I could see the future, we would definitely, you know, want to probably move to online and do some of these things. But the one-stop shop, I'm in support of it for those reasons there, the security. And I just don't think this city is ready to do an online anything only, you know, even though I know if this does not make it, you still would have what you have in place.
Right. And this does not stop us from going to the online permit and plan review. We're still moving ahead with that. We're planning on doing that. We've also hired basically a contractor to help us review permits so that we can allow some of our staff to focus on the...
Well, you know, I mean, and that's what I'm saying, with the reporter problem, the city works, you know, all this stuff that I'm trying to get the constituents I work with to utilize these things, is when I realize the devices that they use, some of it just ain't the proper device, a cell phone, you know. It's much harder. If they even had an iPad or laptop would be better. But like I said, that's not really anybody up here's issue or fault, but I'm just looking out for them and saying, I just like this idea of the one-stop.
Alderman Hanauer.
You okay there, Mayor?
Yep, have to get a drink.
And Alderman Williams, I appreciate, you know, that there are going to be people that can't do online, you know, through their phones or whatever, and there are issues. Again, we're always going to have to have people downtown. I understand that. There are certain people that will not do things online unless they're forced to do so. But I think that, you know, from my standpoint, I want to see the online, because I think the majority of the city would go to online, which would save a lot of people from coming downtown and having to walk in the building and deal with all that. From the aspect of everything, you know, that it has to come back for construction, everything on this page is going to have to come back for ordinance, everything on this page. Let's be honest. If it's over $50,000, it has to come back to us. So, you know, if we do that, we might as well just pass it all at once and move on, because it's going to come back. And then we're not wasting everybody's time here. I mean, so I just think that, you know, I call the question, let's, we got 23 more to go.
Alderwoman Purchase first.
Question two. How long before we see the internet process be in full effect, where Alderman Hanauer is talking about people be able to go on there? Are we in the process of working on that?
We definitely are. We're looking at doing a phased approach. We want to start with some of the smaller permits first and then phase into the larger, full-scale commercial permits. So we want to start kind of with the roofing permit, because there are no plans that really need to be submitted with them. So it's just, in essence, the application. So that was our goal, and then to take a phased approach. And we want to, we would like to have it all completed by this summer.
Okay.
That's our goal.
Okay.
But we do want to have the permits, hopefully, in April for the roofing permits and then phase into the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, if you vote yes, that means we eliminate the funding for the one-stop shop. So all in favor of eliminating that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Unless you want to do a roll call?
Roll call. Alderman Redpath.
Yes.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Nay.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Nay.
Alderman McMiniman.
Nay.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Five and five, Mayor.
And I'll say nay, so the motion fails. Amendment number four, brought on by Alderman Redpath for the corporate fund with regards to $9,021 increase for a 5% salary increase for staff.
I'll move for passage.
Second.
Sorry, I was, lost my train here.
They're moving second. Any discussion? This is for the council coordinator's staff, I believe. Alderwoman De Senzo.
I think, thank you, Mayor. I think we're getting into some dangerous territory here when we are only selecting certain individuals for, for adjustments. We know that there are other people who haven't had raises in quite some time. And, you know, by the looks of this, we've singled out three people for raises and for two of these ordinances or two of these amendments. Is that correct? So, you know, I have a hard time with that. That's just my opinion, and I think there are other people that are just as deserving. And I'm going to have a hard time voting for those.
Alderman Redpath and then Alderman Williams.
The budget is full of raises, and here they are. One of them is 14.2% raise for one individual, and it's supposed to be 5%. By ordinance, we're not supposed to be doing that. So if you vote for the whole budget, which we're not going to discuss every one of these raises, you're going to vote for those raises. So just take that into consideration.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so my struggle with this is clarity on, in particular, the city council staff is, did we hire, did the council hire them? Are they under HR? Or are they, do they report to this council and work for this council? Do they get the same raises as the others or do they not? I'm just trying to understand, you know, as a new alderman, I didn't know how that got set up or, because that's going to help me determine. Technically, they work for the mayor, because we cannot hire, but they are hired by the city council. We have to approve and appropriate for those positions. But by ordinance, they have, the mayor is the only one that can hire them. And they are non-union people, so they're not subjected to reoccurring raises. They've had minimum raises when we put it in the budget to give them a raise. And the last one they had, I believe, was 1.7% two years ago. So... Yeah, well, so I do see those two as kind of in a special-type situation. Their jobs are kind of different than the others as they work for the city council. But that's where I would stop. I feel the other way about anything else. I'm similar to what Alderman De Senzo has stated. Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Is this a one-time?
Yes.
Race? So next year, you would have to come back and add?
Next year, if we want to give them a raise, we go back and give them another one. But they're getting a decent raise this year that they haven't had for several years. So that's why, that's why I put it in.
Any other discussion, Alderman McMiniman?
Well, I think they are getting the regular cost of living increases like all the other employees are receiving. And I think we need to reward employees that do outstanding work, but I think we'd have to go into executive session so that all 10 of us can discuss these raises for these two individuals. I do recall that I believe that one of these individuals received a special 5% raise four years ago. That was in addition to the cost of living increases. And lastly, I think it's, again, I think it's good to reward those that perform well. What I'd like to see us do in the future, Mayor, maybe you can put together a fund where we give non-pensionable bonuses to those that perform well, that doesn't permanently increase their salary, but they get a lump sum of, you know, $500, $1,000 for outstanding performance. And that's something we've been doing with our union employees. In the first year, in a similar way, in the first year of some of these union contracts, we're giving a non-pensionable increase in lieu of a wage increase, which I think makes sense. So that's why I can't be a yes vote for this.
Alderman Hanauer.
Again, all these are going to come back in front of the city council. Again, this is the appropriation that we're voting on. The actual ordinance to give a raise will have to come back to the city council. Is that right, Director?
If the individual is going to receive a raise in excess of 5% without a title change, that is correct. If they were promoted into a different title, that would not have to come before council.
Right.
And then Director McCarty, if you could, what has been budgeted, has there been merit pool budgeted and then also increase or raises for the non-union personnel?
We did budget about 2.25% for cost of living increases.
Alderman Hanauer and then Alderwoman Conley.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I can only speak for Jeanette, because I think someone told me that she just now, how many, Tim, how many years has Jeanette been with us with the city council office? It's been a long time. She's just now getting caught up to when the person that she replaced. And she does a lot. So, you know, I think we've gotten, if the person didn't leave, we would have been paying a lot more for that job. So I'm in full support of this.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just need clarification from the budget director. Are all of our non-unions, so the at-will staff, getting a COLA increase this year?
Ultimately, that'll be up to the mayor, but there is one that's budgeted.
Okay, and that's 2.75?
2.25.
2.25. Okay.
So from a budgetary standpoint, it could be that or anything less. And then, of course, there's the case-by-case basis. The mayor asks about merit pool, and I want to clarify that we typically have some THL to work with in most departments if the mayor feels that somebody deserves an increase larger than the COLA.
So then would this be 5% on top of that?
No. It should be replacing the, instead of them getting a 2.25, it'll be a total of five.
Okay, so no more than five?
That was my intent. I don't know if that was your intent, Director, but that was my intent.
Right. Well, that was our interpretation, sir.
And that was my confusion. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
My only final comments is that, you know, we have employees in this city that we lose professionals every day, and we lose them because we can't compete with other cities, we can't compete with state government, we can't compete with the private sector. We should pay our people reasonable salaries in order to keep the best of the best. And the two employees that we have working for us at the city council are outstanding, and you all know that. If you don't know that, vote no.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, Mayor, just a point of clarification. I understand that the only position that we are entitled, we as a council are entitled to hire and have a say is Mr. Griffin's position. And that, you know, I think that's set up by the code. But Alderman Williams, I agree with you. This is, it's uncomfortable to talk about people's salaries and what they're going to get. However, it's a necessary part of this process, and I intend a voting yes.
Any other discussion?
Well, again, you know...
Yep, Alderman McMiniman.
Let's be honest here. These are highly desirable positions that many people would like to attain to. Last time we had an open position for city council coordinator, we had a very strong interest in the position. So I don't really follow that. And again, this is very uncomfortable to talk about this out in the public, because this, when you talk about personnel and performance raises, it should be in executive session.
So you're willing to trade people who work for us at a high rate of success and chance that somebody else is going to come in and do the same job?
I'd rather have this conversation in executive session.
Brought it up.
That's where it's, that's where it belongs.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman De Senzo.
But you are making a good point. If we're voting on the budget, then we are voting on raises for lots of other people that we haven't considered at all and have no input on. So that...
They're getting a lot more than 5%.
Yes. He said one person's getting 14%.
Well, that's not me. Anonymous information.
I got the spreadsheet right here.
Unanonymous.
You should share that before we have a vote on these kinds of things, Alderman Redpath.
I brought it up at the council a couple weeks ago, and we got a response that it was 5%. I had the city treasurer's office do an analysis on a spreadsheet, and here it is.
I haven't seen that list. I haven't seen the raises, but I heard from someone that there's some mistakes in there.
Again, this is appropriation, and when we get to the point where it comes back for the raises, we can talk about it then. But the appropriation has been put in by the mayor's office, and if he decides to go that high, then he can explain why they have to do it.
Well, one mistake doesn't allow a second mistake. I think we all learned that too. You can't justify one mistake with a second mistake.
Call a question. Second.
All in favor of the amendment, and that is to provide a 5% increase for the city council administrative offices, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Philginsy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Aye.
Alderman McMiniman.
No.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor.
Motion carries. Next one is again by Alderman Redpath for Office of Public Works, 5% increase for the zoning administrator. Is there a motion?
Motion to for passage.
Second.
They're moving for passage and seconded discussion?
Once again, this is a, this is a professional that we can't lose. This person's done an outstanding job for the city. And I just think that's the same situation that we're running into with the staff I just passed. So that's my discussion.
Alderman Williams and Alderman Hanauer.
So now, this is where I think, I feel we're crossing over into administration. I think we're legislators and we do policy and approach, but I also think that they, who we're speaking of has a boss and has a director and has a mayor, and those are the folks who should be determining if there's worthiness for a raise and what those amounts should be and stuff like that. If there's anything of extraordinary or some kind of circumstances, then I agree with Alderman McMiniman, we need to be in executive session or something. But I think we are when we start, I mean, next time I might say, come on, Sean, let's I mean, next time I might say, come on, Sean, let's give Darryl Harris a 5%. I mean, that just opens the door for me.
That for, yeah, I'm listening.
You know, that just opens the door for me when we get selective like this. What sold me on ours is because it's, it's the people, the way they're hired and who they work and how their jobs are set up, which made a difference for me. This one we're talking about now, to me, is just like any other employee. A good guy, I like the guy, but I don't think it's this council. I think it should be the mayor and admin or whoever he works for that determines that. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderwoman Conley.
Well, we lost our assistant zoning administrator because he went to get a job where he got paid quite a bit more money. Our zoning is, is, is the backbone of, of development in, in this city. And I've had people say, we, we, you know, if we lose Matt, we're, we're, we're going to be in big trouble. Because those kind of, those kind of jobs are not easy to fill with people that have the knowledge that, that, that they do. And look, you know, I know when, when you see the jobs that, but some of these people that are getting the percentage of raises that's, that, that I've seen, and then you see someone like Matt, that he's, he's crucial. And you want to see things stop in a hurry. If he walks out the door, it's a problem. So I, I understand where you're coming from. We don't want to go down every, every person's, every person in, in, in the city. But I don't think that he has had a raise in quite a, quite a while, and I, I think it's deserved.
When is the last time he, oh, I'm sorry. When was the last time he had a raise?
Well, I don't know, should we dive into all that?
Exactly.
I mean, and this is why I'm saying.
I don't know if we want to dive into that. I think we might want to go to executive session, but Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alderman Williams, I, I understand, I, I understand where you're at right now, too, because that's kind of where my thinking is, too. I want to be careful. I mean, the, the mayor certainly has authority, and I don't want, I don't want to be stepping on his toes. This is one of those situations where, again, this is just the allocation of the funds. Ultimately, the decision to grant this is not in this council's hands. We're just saying that this money can be spent in this manner. And then, you know, it's, it's ultimately not our decision whether it is. That's, that's, that's the mayor's decision. So we're just giving him the ability to make that decision if he wants to. So, and again, I, I think this is, this is an individual who, at least in my dealings with him, has been exceptionally professional, useful, supportive. I've learned more about zoning than I ever would have thought I would have. But so, yeah, Mayor, we're just, this is an allocation, not a decision.
Alderwoman DeSensio, then Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Redpath.
Questions answered.
Okay. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, that, the, this, one thing I want, want to add is, Mayor, years ago, and I think you were at the city at the time as well, I remember when Joe Gooden was the zoning administrator, and, and he came to the mayor and myself and had a conversation with us about his timeline for retirement and just how important it was to bring somebody on board. And ultimately, that person was Matt. And I think he's done a phenomenal job that I just encourage you to consider. Let's, let's plan for a backup, and I know you've done that with a number of other offices, and, and that's all, so thank you.
Yeah, that's one point that Director Bottom has done is restructured Public Works. And so from that, there's a change of duties and reassignments, but succession planning is one of those. Alderman Redpath?
My main intent with this ordinance was to bring attention to this. And we've watched, and nobody but, nobody more than Corporation Council can tell you about losing professional lawyers. We lost one of probably the best contract lawyers we ever had when Stephanie Barton, when she walked out the door. And I know the Corporation Council loses lawyers on a regular basis. It's hard, it's hard to keep professionals. Engineers is the same problem. They, they go to other places and take that talent. We can't afford to lose these folks. We got to show them, we appreciate them, and make sure that we're paying them comparable salaries for, for great work.
I thought you were going to say Nate Rice, because that's who we heard was the invaluable one to lose. And one of the reasons, and this is a reality check for everybody, is with remote work, I mean, hybrid situations, the state is offering it and other entities, that's becoming more challenging because it's just not the salary. It's who's working remote, who has that flexibility in their schedule. So that's a challenge for all of us, and that was, I know we're losing people because of that.
Call a question.
Alderman McMinim, then we'll call the question.
Okay. I got a question first and then a few comments. Who's the assistant zoning director or manager? Comment was made, we just lost the assistant zoning manager. I just talked with that individual two weeks ago, and maybe he's left, but.
John Harris is still here, he's still employed with us.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that we haven't lost the assistant zoning manager.
Matt Wolf. He's the planning coordinator, he's in charge of the, the building side. Josh roughly, Josh roughly replaced him.
But the two top zoning people are still there, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So, you know, the graveyard is full of indispensable individuals. We, we can, all the people that are top levels are very well-trained. We hate to see them go. I think we're in dangerous territory here picking certain people out in public like this. I think we'd like to give raises to all our outstanding employees that are out there. I think we're setting a bad example by trying to say, well, we should pump these people up and not pump these other people up. And also, let's remember that the individuals we've talked about so far tonight, the two that work for the city council, and then this individual, they're tier-one employees. And tier-one employees mean they get the sweetest pension you can imagine. Tier-two employees that were hired after 2011 do not get that same type of attractive pension. And so when we give these people at the end of their career pay increases above others, we're, we're hurting, we're impacting our pension liability. So I think this is just bad practice. I, I hope there's no votes on this. And if we want to set up ways to compensate our outstanding employees, there should be, as someone had mentioned, it should go up through the chain of command. And those that observe the work being done should make the recommendation, that directly observe the work. That's called the supervisory train, chain. And so this is very uncomfortable because we all have comments about what we'd like to make about performance. But doing it out in public like this is not the right way to do it.
Call the question.
All in favor of the motion to, if you vote yes, that means to support the recommendation for an increase, salary increase for the zoning administrator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call. Motion carries.
Roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Nay.
Alderman McMinim.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Be six ayes and four nays, Mayor. Thank you, Amendment Number Six from Alderman Redpath regarding the water fund to reduce the water fund pilot to the corporate fund in the amount of $415,127.
Move for passage?
Second.
The move and second to pass. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath?
I've discussed this before about the situation with our water fund. I think in order to shore that up a little bit at this time when we can afford it, I think it would be really a good idea for us to forego this $415,000 to, to help out the water fund. We know in the future that things are going to be a little tight in the water department. And I think this will be something that will shore them up so we can try to avoid a rate increase in the next year or two, which is inevitable if we don't do something. Hopefully, I know the mayor's in negotiations with other places to try to shore that fund up, and I, I hope that works. I'm not going to talk about that now, but we, I think the water fund's an area that needs the most help, and I asked for passage.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Roll call.
Asking for roll call. Okay. Should we just roll call all the amendments?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Nay.
Alderman McMinim.
Nay.
Alderwoman Conley.
Nay.
Alderman Donlin.
Nay.
Really good.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Five and five, Mayor.
Your turn.
What's that?
Your turn.
Turn.
It's tie, five, five. Aye. The amendment passes. Next amendment from Alderman Redpath regarding the corporate fund and Office of Budget Management for $919,750. Corporate fund donation of vehicles to the water fund and the paid from the corporate fund to the water fund by vehicles. If I'm reading that correct, is that correct?
Yes. Motion for passage.
The move for passage is our second. Dies for lack of a second?
No tricks of those guys.
Amendment Number Eight for Alderman McMinim from the corporate fund for the Office of Budget Management, $8 million decrease. It removes the firehouse construction allocation and decreases the corporate fund obligation.
Mr. Mayor, can we pass on this and come back to it at the end of the amendments?
Sure.
Thank you.
Amendment Number Nine from Alderman McMinim regarding the corporate fund. And two of them actually, one for the fire and police pension in the amount of $1 million each for an increase, the voluntary pension payment.
I hope we can get a yes vote from the city council on this. I know it's a lot of money. You know, a stitch in time saves nine. If we'd been properly contributing to our pension funds the last 25 years, we wouldn't be in the hole we're in. Eventually, we have to get into the habit of paying more into our pension funds. If I can, just give a little bit of a history. When Ozzy Langfelder left office, we owed the police and fire pension funds in 1995 $15 million. That's five plus five plus five, $15 million. Then when I came on the council in 2011, we owed the police and fire pension funds a total of $200 million. It had grown from $15 million to $200 million. Now, 11 years later, the total fire and pension debt has grown, and this is based on the most recent CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, it's grown to $450 million. We have to get into the habit of paying the more appropriate amounts. The actuaries have really let us down. They kept giving us bad advice on what we should be contributing in to the pensions. But we've let the actuaries make mistakes because we didn't step in and correct their mistakes. The reason we're paying so much now in pension contributions, we're up to about $30 million, is because the councils 10 years ago and 20 years ago didn't put in enough money. So this is a, fortunately, we've got more money in our reserves than we've ever had right now. So now's a good time to set the right precedent. I think, Mayor, you've done some good steps on this, but we have to go further. If, if these two increased contributions are made to the police and fire pension funds, despite some of the earlier votes we made tonight, I'd be a yes on this budget. I'd like to be a yes before I retire from the city council next year. I've been serving 11 years. But we, we have to be responsible. We can't shift all these obligations to the council members on here that are in their 30s. They're going to face a monstrous problem as time goes on if we don't resolve the issue. So I hope we get enough yes votes on this. If I, if I would be fine, I think Mayor might break it with a yes, but I, I hope we can get enough.
Here, you pass the budget, I might do that. Any other discussion? Alderman Gregory.
I, you know, and, and, you know, we've talked and I've, I've, I've heard you since I'm up here on these, on these pensions, and, you know, we, we made some extra payments on them, and, you know, I've, it really irks me that we're, that we're in this position. And this is a lot of money, but, but, you know, I'm considering it. And, and I just wanted to ask, is there, is there any, is there any appetite to, to reduce this to five and five and make it just a million? Or you want to go with your, with your, with your amendment?
I'll go for broke, Mr. Gregory.
All right.
I have.
Alderwoman Purchase.
I know that there's some legislation downtown at the State House, and it's ongoing right now. And Alderman McMinim, do you mind if we hold this and see what the results are so we're not putting the cart before the horse?
I'll say no for this reason because, you know, the legislature 11 years ago tried to save the pensions. They extended the ramp 11 years ago. They created tier-one and tier-two 11 years ago. And what happened to our pension debt, it just grew. Ultimately, it's going to be the municipality that has to fund the pension. We're not going to get revenue from the state government to fund our pensions, so I think.
But what if they do vote for it?
Well, the, the ramp, we're going to have to put more money into the pensions whether the ramp extension takes place or not. So I think it's, it's, let's get into the practice of giving the better amounts, the, the more accurate, reasonable amounts.
Alderman Redpath?
You know, the police and fire are our greatest assets, along with our utility and our public works, but they are great assets, and we have to fund a whole bunch of money. I think it's $28 million for our pension fund every year. And in the past, we've made supplement payments through, through the year that last year, I believe last year we did. And that's probably something we should be doing this year if, if things work out. We have a lot of important things on this budget, and, and most of them is fire. We got to build firehouses, we got to, we got to put in fire trucks. And I, I support the fire and I support the police. But I think, I think just these two ordinances need, need to fail in order for us to move through the budget and, and keep the budget stable. And that way, if we get some extra money through the year, we can always add money to it. But doing it right now is probably not a good idea. I, I ask for denial.
Any other discussion, Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a question of the budget director. You know, when we passed, this council passed that, the ordinance a couple of years ago that said if the fund balance is over a certain percentage, that an additional, additional payments would be made to the pensions, what is that anticipated to be this, this fiscal year forthcoming?
About $600,000.
So 600 each or 600 total?
It was 600 total between the two, 300 each. And on top of that, we have the cannabis money. And then the budget does include, remember, a couple of already a million dollars each in additional pension payments. So the ARC this year is 28 million-ish, and we've got 31.1 million in the budget so far for next year for pension payments.
And Alderman McMinim, I understand the need and the fact that we are indeed behind and that we need to continually look for ways to do something different. I, I, again, as, as we've, I've stated in past budget hearings and conversations with you all outside the meetings individually, that, you know, we have, it makes me nervous when you look at the three-year trend and you look at, you, we have a delicate balance. You look at the three-year trend and the fund balance is projected to go down. And we're, we're banking on, if we do certain things, we're banking on the economy either staying stable or, or increasing. And I hope that happens. But there's nothing to say that we couldn't make additional payments as we go along. That's why I'm reluctant. I hear what you're saying, I think you're absolutely correct. I think you said to me earlier today that, you know, Jim, we, we have, we have the money. Why don't, you know, we ought to do it while we still have it. And I think that's a fair argument. But I'm reluctant to, reluctant without knowing where we're headed for sure to, to, to vote for this this evening, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm sorry, but I just don't think that's a fair logic. Why? Because by voting.
That's my logic, Alderman, and we all have our own, and, and I appreciate and respect yours. Please do the same thing with mine.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We want to spend more money for other purposes right now.
No, I'm saying save it. Don't spend it. What a novel concept.
Well, see, this is a debt.
Keep it in the fund. That way, it's there in case we need it in the future.
Go ahead, Alderman McMinim.
So this is like a mortgage. It, it doesn't go away. The only way you can reduce the debt is by paying it down. And I think by, if we don't pass this tonight, we're just saying, well, Alderman Gregory and Alderwoman Purchase will have to find the money, and it'll be that much more money to find down.
He'll be in a new ward.
I believe that.
You only got one term after this, Chuck, remember.
No, I'm not moved your ward.
We've begun.
Yeah.
Allderman Mc.
I thought you were going to run for Mayor Chuck, but maybe not.
Alderman Conley.[1786.86]
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I'm going to echo my colleague, Alderman Donlin. I understand, Alderman McMinimum, where you're going with this. That's why in my first year on council, one of my first ordinance was to find new funds to put an additional funding stream into this pension fund. It is critical that we add to this, but I think Alderman Donlin makes a valid point. We can always do an ordinance later in the year. I mean, if this year turns around and we have, you know, our economy continues to build, we've got some exciting building possibly going on in Ward Six with Legacy Point. I mean, we have potential for a lot of new things coming into this community and an increase in the stability of our corporate fund. I say, and while I appreciate and respect that you want to make these extra payments now, I'd like to wait, save in the bank and possibly increase our payments when we find out that we're well above our cutoff for the mandated extra payment. So, I appreciate the thought behind this, but...
Just in summary, in closing, that's what council's been saying for 25 years. And, you know, we'll take care of it down the road, but meanwhile, the debt just keeps growing and growing. And so, therefore, that's not a good, in my opinion, it's not a good approach because that's what's been going on for 25 years.
Alderman Repath and Alderman Hanauer.
You know, Alderman Purchase has a great thought there, the variables of what the legislature's going to do because they are thinking about this. I know Governor Pritzker's even got this on his radar a little bit. I'm not saying he's making a commitment, but he's actually thinking about the pension systems. And so, I think we give them a chance to hopefully, if they don't do anything else other than scale back our ramp for another 10 years to give us a little time to adjust and help, it's going to be a benefit. But, you know, Alderman, I understand what you're saying about the last 25 years, but you know, it wasn't just the funding portion of the pension stuff that's been in trouble. It's been, there's been a lot of different variables, that obstacles that jumped in the way of the pensions throughout the years. When the legislature boosted that all up and the economy went sour, but it wasn't just that the city council didn't want to fund it because we absolutely want to fund it. We value our police and our fire, and that's important to us. And we're not voting against this because we don't like them. It's because we, it's because we've got to be physically responsible as best we can, and this is important. Alderman Donlin hit it on the head. We're, if we have the money, we're going to appropriate more money through the year, but I don't think we should do it here.
Well, we've never had a higher balance than what we got now. And I think it's a dream world to think that if we're going to do it somehow in the future when we can't do it now.
Alderman Hanauer.
Couple things, Mayor. Couple, couple months ago, when we switched, we wanted to do fund balance over ARPA. We got to complain from you, Alderman, that we shouldn't be using fund balance. This is 2%, almost 2% fund balance, okay? Let's look at the three-year trend that we just got today from Director McCarty. Right now, we're going to spend in this year alone from fund balance, excess fund balance, almost 20%. I've been on this council for, what, six years now? We haven't spent 20%. It takes, it takes, we were averaging about five. It takes us about four years to do that. And we're going to do it in one year. We add this, that's $2 million approximately, almost 2%. In two years, the projection is 17.6% fund balance, okay? Take that down to 15, and then I'm sure there's going to be other things that we're going to spend. And then you go to 13 and to 12, and then what's our critical mass? We've got a rule that says if it goes below a certain amount, we've got to raise taxes. Or we got it, we got it, something, I can't remember the exact issue, but we have, we do have a rule on that. And some of us are going to be here, some of us won't, who knows? But that's the facts. And I understand trying to fund it. We didn't put ourselves in this mess. The legislature put us in this mess when they sweetened the pensions in 2001. They were the ones that did it. It's not the administrations that did it. We were, I believe, at one point, we were at 80% funding, 70% funding, and with a stroke of a pen, we went from that to 40% because it cut it in half. I'm against this. We have got to, we are spending an insane amount of money this year. Now, this is a great year to do it. And if we have money left over at the end of the year, the receipts come in higher, I have no problem adding more money to the pensions. We've done it every year, you know, the last couple of years, and I think that's good. But I don't think we should commit to it right now. Let's see what our receipts are.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I won't raise my voice. I'm just going to say that the pension debt in the last 11 years hasn't grown from, these are the facts, from $200 million to $450 million. And yeah, the, years ago, the general assembly sweetened the benefits, but they did the opposite 11 years ago, and it hasn't helped us. And, you know, there's such a thing as discretionary spending, and there's such a thing as obligatory spending. This debt is, will not go away, and we can face the music and face the facts now, or it's just going to get worse down the road. So, we can vote the way we see it.
The one point of clarification, I appreciate everybody's comments, of the future because this is what it's all about with regards to, you know, this city council, this administration put forward the policy, the fiscal responsible policy of if we go below 8%, that rings the bell that we need to do something, you know, raise taxes or whatever. We had to make those difficult decisions. That's why we put the policy in place. And then we had the upper level at that time was 16%. At that time, we said anything above 16% would go towards capital improvements, which we're doing with this budget, or pensions. But unfortunately, the change had been made to that where now we have to reach the goal of 20% as passed by the council for the pension. So, that's why it's only $300,000 per pension. And so, that's the understanding of that, just to give some clarification. So, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to add additional payment to the police and fire pension, the amount of $1 million each, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
Nay.
Motion.
Roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Roll call vote.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
No.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
No.
Alderman McMinimum.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Six noes and four yeses, Mayor.
The request pass, or fails. Next amendment is brought by, amendment number 10, brought by Alderman Gregory, corporate fund, the amount of $100,000 to fund focused deterrence for the police department coming from the cannabis sales tax. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roger, second?
Second.
The movement, second, to approve, a discussion. Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I just need some clarification. So, my, my target fund was a fund called, from the local distributor fund. I know that we do get some state cannabis tax sales pushed down to that, so, and I was under the understanding that we had some funds in there. Am I correcting that, Mr. McCarty?
These cannabis funds are not the local MROT, retailer, municipal retailer occupation tax that you might be thinking of that has the 50-50 split. This is the state proceeds that we get that are to be used for police purposes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So, these funds are from the state. They are earmarked only for crime prevention and equipment and et cetera. With the new chief, I wanted to give him, you know, the tools necessary to really revamp our focused deterrence and crime prevention measures. And, you know, so that's why I brought this forth, so.
So, what does this do exactly?
I would ask, sorry, Chief.
Chief Scarlett.
Good evening, everyone. So, the focused deterrence program is a plan that we've had in place probably about four or five years now. Essentially...
We know about focused deterrence. What does this money do exactly?
Okay, so, well, it helps continue to run the plan. So, there's money that's earmarked for a specific project coordinator to oversee the program. There's money earmarked for mentors. There's money earmarked for advertising, for printing, for rental space to host these, the meetings for the focused deterrence program.
It's not already in the budget?
Yeah, that's not already in the budget.
No.
So, how do you...
Because we have voted to put money in the budget before for focused deterrence.
So, the initial focused deterrence program was funded through a grant that we received, again, four or five years ago. There might have been a match, I can't remember off the top of my head with that.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. So, Chief, how much did you have to run this plan, this program when you, when you had the grant? How much were those grant funds?
I'd have to check on that. I'm not 100% sure. It was a two-year grant, and we had a research partner that helped us organize the plan. So, that's all now implemented, and we had to pay for that out of that grant. So, I'd really have to go back and look at the grant.
But the base, the basics of this program are already in place. You just don't have any ongoing funding for this?
That's correct.
So, because of the way this, the way that this money comes to us, and I don't know who can answer this question, does this have to focus simply on drug-related charges? Or would it be able to focus deterrence for any, any purpose? That might be Director McCarty.
I'm not quite sure I heard the question.
So, my understanding is, so this is, this is for crime prevention, and then it comes from the state. Does the state have any restrictions on the focus of the crime prevention? Like, does it have to be drug-crime related, or can it be whatever, you know, our focused deterrence team deems is necessary?
No, I don't think there was any strict regulations on it. I think it could be used just in general for police purposes and crime prevention.
Okay, and then, so are you able to hold these meetings with COVID restrictions?
Well, the goal is that we may be on the backside of that. That would be my hope. Could we hold them? Yes. Would they be as effective? Likely not. So, our goal is to, you know, wait till we get, hopefully, pass some of the restrictions and are able to bring individuals in. And again, just to recap, it's not, it's really those individuals who have a propensity for violence, and we're focusing on juveniles within our city that we believe, again, have that propensity for violence. And we want to try and give them every opportunity to change their course of action so they don't go down that, that particular path. And so, that's the point, and we bring everyone together in a room and have a conversation with these young individuals. And again, then offer them services, mentors, whatever the case may be, to give them every opportunity for success.
And it is, the grant that originally funded this, is that available now? Is there an opportunity to apply for that?
To my knowledge, that was a one-time grant, but I would have to look at that. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as far as the focused deterrence goes, pre-pandemic focused deterrence is going to be totally different from post-pandemic because we'll have to reshape that to meet today's societal needs to stem gun violence. That's what it's towards.
Correct. And one thing that we really learned is that, to use your words, pre-pandemic, we focus on sort of older individuals that were, had already engaged in gun violence, and we think it's important to really focus on the juveniles that maybe haven't made those life-altering decisions yet to try and give them, again, every opportunity for success.
Alderman Repath and Alderman Gregory.
So, why wouldn't our crime prevention unit already have encompassed this, this task?
Well, we don't have a crime prevention unit within the agency currently.
We don't?
No. We have Crime Stoppers, which is of Sangamon and Art County.
That's news to me. Okay, thanks.
Alderman Gregory.
No, let's vote, I called a question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the, or do roll call vote. I'll just jump right straight to this one.
That's right.
It'll take a while, but I'm jumping right to it finally.
Aye, Mayor.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMinimum.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes. See if you would have done a roll call, if you wouldn't have done a roll call, wouldn't it quick?
It's a lot easier. Next is from Alderman Gregory, corporate fund for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for the amount of $125,000. In the partnership, continuing the partnership we started last year with the city and the Park District Youth Employment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion? Alderman, or Alderman Repath.
Is this a shared expense with the Park District?
They're here if you'd like to come up. We appreciate the president, Leslie Schroth, being here.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
This partnership, though, I asked them to come tonight just in case there was any questions, but this partnership, it proved to play out really dividends for our community, you know, in an area that, you know, needs some summer youth employment, some activities going. You know, I did look to draw this from our CBDG funds. I don't, you know, I don't want to wrestle with you guys about the corporate fund, but and we are seeking clarification on that, but we did use the same allocation from CBD last year, a lower amount. It is in an area of low and moderate income individuals, and it will serve that. The reason why I did put it in the budget right now, because I would like for them to get a head start on prepping and getting young people involved. Last year, we were a little late. It was on us trying to push it out, and we got a lot of kids, but a lot of them started to peel off a little quick as they found some other activities, going through their training. So, we really want to give them ample amount of time. There's a fabulous young team from the community that really did a good job with young girls and young men, and it was really packed out there and with some, you know, again, shout out to the H.D. Smith family for their wonderful donation to that, to the east side. And it's going to be some wonderful things going on. So, that's why I brought this forth, to continue this, this great partnership.
Alderwoman DeCenso and Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Is this a matching, does the Park District match these funds? Or are we paying more?
It's the same.
If you'd come up to the mic, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'll pull up my emails.
We are, we are, we are putting dollars into this program, and it's not a one-for-one match, but we also have an extraordinary amount of staff time that, of our staff time that goes into this. So, in fact, last year, we pulled staff from all over the district to make it a success. So, yes, there's quite a bit of dollars put in by the district.
Yeah, and I would add to that, that, you know, programs like this are very difficult to get off the ground. They're hard to get them started. And through a partnership with the city last year and the Park District, we were able to get this off the ground. And as Alderman Gregory pointed out, it was a huge success. We had hundreds and hundreds of kids and families out there. We employed several local youth in the community that wouldn't maybe have jobs had it not been for that. So, this year, we want to continue upon that, and we want to build upon that. We don't want to lose this steam on this great program that we've created.
Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Donlin, and then Alderwoman Conley.
I guess, and I like the program. I would, I would much rather see us amend this to use CDVG money. I don't, if we used it last year, we should be able to use it this year. I understand what the problem is. Absolutely, I agree.
Or we split it between the two funds?
I can answer that.
Last year, actually, it was COVID dollars that were used. And so, we can look at CDVG, they have to be for low-income families that benefit specifically for that.
It is predominantly the kids who come in and young adults who use this program. It's predominantly low and low income.
It's one of our eight low senses, low and moderate.
Can we amend it? And then, and then if there's a problem, it has to come back for us to appropriate anyway. If there's, can we go ahead and amend it? Sean, would you have a problem? Amend it to CDVG?
No, that's what I, my goal was. I know we, we were late getting some clarification back to, to our directors, so I apologize. We miscommunicated on that, but always the goal was out of CBDG and not corporate funds, so.
I appreciate that. Sorry about that mistake.
And I would just like to say, I really appreciate the partnership. And I would just like to say, I really appreciate the partnership. You know, we can do so many great things for the kids in our community and the young adults in our community and, and talk about preventative programming. And so I, I appreciated it last year, and, and we certainly want it to be a tremendous success, and we can do more together. So thank you so much for considering it, we really appreciate it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Pardon me?
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is.
Well, Mr. McCarty.
He's going to clarify something.
So the mayor's right, last year, we used CDVG COVID cares money for this, it wasn't eligible expense. The question that's before us right now, and I've asked Krista Colas and Oped to try and clarify, she's our CDVG person, is whether or not we can utilize regular CDVG funds for this purpose. We don't have an answer back on that yet, which is why we put it in Corporate. But certainly, if the council wishes, we can go ahead and do a change here on the floor to CDVG. And then if it turns out that it is not eligible, we can bring it back to Alderman Gregory, and then he can bring it back to the council if he wishes.
Aye, that works for me.
I make a motion that we move it to CDVG.
Been moved and seconded to amend it to come out as Community Development Block Grant Funds, if permissible. And second, any discussion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay.
Roll call, no.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
So, well, we're not done yet. Let's try, I think it's Alderman Donlin, then Alderwoman Conley, then Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My two questions were asked and answered, but I do want to thank Alderman Gregory for reaching out and chatting with me about this, and applaud the Park District and the City Bowl, thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. No, and I appreciate the flexibility on the funding source. I would also ask that, since we have another grant coordinator, another grant writer in this budget, that we look to find some grant funds so that we can really
I agree.
make a bigger impact with this program.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
I agree.
And we would be happy to be helpful in, in any way.
Well, I would hope the Park District would be looking for grants, too.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, we actually had a $25,000 grant already that's going towards this program. That's part of the money that we're putting in to help fund this as well.
Alderman Williams, and then Alderman Gregory.
Oh, the budget director answered, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Gregory.
I would just like to say, though, you know, on the overall, you know, Park thing, when, when I came in office, you know, guys, you know, there was, there was some harp on our Park District and, and what we believe. But I, you know, I, I got to tip my hat off, you know. Bergen Park and Roy's area has got a new park, Owls Park and Chris's area is got, is looking good. Cox Park is about to look fabulous. Kiwanis Park on the south side of town is looking fabulous. The Park Southwest are ready to bomb. We, we are, you know, they're, they're working hard, and I know they take a lot of grief and, and stuff. So I, I appreciate you guys for, you know, receiving it and, and, and pushing for it, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote, or roll call vote? Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Just to be clear, this is the amended motion.
Right, the amended.
Yes.
Coming out of Community Development Block Grant. Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Tonight is a no-nays, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, much appreciated.
Amendment number 12 comes from Alderwoman DeCenso, changing Corporate Fund dollars to ARPA dollars for Public Works, the amount of $50,000 using the ARPA funds to create a pedestrian crossing at MacArthur and Williams Boulevard.
Oh my gosh, I know I've never brought this up before.
Passage, or move for passage is our second.
Second, thanks, yes.
Second discussion?
It's probably only going to be 25,000, but we'll put the 50,000 in there just in case. Director Bottom put together a very elaborate $300,000 crossing that was going to take a lot longer. I'm like, no, 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 I just want some lights. So this is just to light it up and make sure everyone can see it. And that's it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the, I'm going to take a risk, go on, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries, or the amendment does. Next one is from Alderman Hanauer regarding, from the Corporate Fund, for the Fire Department to put in $750,000 to increase Fire Department overtime.
Motion to pass.
Second.
The move second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Just real quick, I, I, I think it pretty much speaks for itself. But the last, what, four or five years, we've seen a, you know, we, we, we underfunded the overtime for the Fire Department. This year, hopefully, to the tune of, this really should be about a million. But we're getting a class in, and so three-quarters of the year it takes to get the class ready to go. So we're hoping that a quarter of a year will cut back on overtime. The Fire Department has said, numerous people at the Fire Department have said, is with this, with this group, that it's going to cut back on overtime. So we'll, we'll be watching. And so I just think we need to, we need to fund, we need to have the budget to what, what the prior, what the history shows. And, and the history shows that there, it needs to be raised.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Hanauer, for bringing this forward, and also for bringing up the new class. Have we budgeted money for this new class? For equipment for them, for supplies for them? Because I'm fearful that we're going to get this class in and then not have the money to pay for them for their, the, the basic needs to get them trained.
Yep, Chief?
I defer part of that to Director McCarty, as far as, I believe that the, we have the money in the budget as far as the number of people, but it costs roughly $6,000 per recruit for things like rig gear and helmets and their books and all that type of training. I don't know, I don't think that that was included in this year's budget, but I would.
So you're talking about an extra $120,000?
Twenty, 6,000 ahead times, let's say it was 20, is 120,000 total, so.
I can add.
Yeah.
Multiply.
All right.
Every now and then.
Director McCarty, do you know if the equipment for the new firefighters are put into the?
Yeah, we have, we have it in there, we put it in every year, we assume we're going to hire every year.
Okay.
He says it's in.
Okay.
Great. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, Chief, just a request, first of all, a comment and a request. First of all, thank you very much for updating us on a regular basis as far as where we are with overtime as we go along throughout the fiscal year. It was a problem in the past to not, for us not to be updated. And if you could just continue to do so, so there's no surprises, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Happy to do so.
Alderwoman Conley?
Nope, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. Next one is from Alderwoman Purchase regarding the Electric Fund of City Waterline Power to increase $100,000. That would go towards the weatherization program?
Move to adopt.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye. Oh, sorry, Alderwoman Conley, then Alderwoman DeCenso.
I think Alderwoman DeCenso had her hand up first.
So this is, will this cover the entire city, or is this, okay. Yes, it will. And is there staff available to, is there, are there people to staff this program? From my understanding, it is, but I'm sure Director Brown is here. Director?
Wake up.
Yeah, we will, we will have staff, we are short-staffed, because we do have the, the supervisor that's left us about six months ago. And we posted positions twice, and we still are having trouble trying to fill that position. But we do have staff in place that will be executing that program. The, you know, some of the, some of the funds that we, I see is, is going towards, you know, weatherization, energy efficiency improvements, those kinds of things. So it's a pretty broad area that we can allocate money to, so.
So you're comfortable with this program?
Yes, yeah.
Me, too. I know you are.
Conley?
Yeah, yeah, nice try, Doug. I just want to make sure, I, I know we've done this program in the past. Are there funds already in your budget that you've, that you can also, that you can also use for this purpose?
Uh, ye- yes, yeah, so we'll, we'll have, we'll have funds for that. Now, we, we, we're not going to be able to double the funds completely for that. So some of the funds that we have, it's, it's in the, the program and everything else that we have for energy efficiency, weatherization, it's, it's part of our Helping Homes program is in that. But it's, it's broader than just that program. So there's, there's more things in there, you could have insulation rebates, we could have LED lighting programs. So there's other things that, you know, we'll be using this money, you know, in total for.
Good.
To make sure that we can spend it.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, my understanding is that in the past, we've gotten, we, we have had some federal grants to, to, to use on these, this program. Is there any chance we can find anything like that this year?
Well, it gets, it gets back to staffing, really. I mean, with that, with, you know, looking for grants, I mean, we did have, actually, an accountant that we were going to use for doing a lot of grants across the whole utility. And the person left us about three weeks ago, I think, so.
Should have paid him more.
You know, we're going to, take it, take it another look again. Sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. Next amendment comes from the Office of Budget and Management, from the Corporate and Capital Equipment Fund for $6.2 million, shifts funding from the fire construction to equipment, using $2 million Corporate Fund, $2 million ARPA Funds, and then $2 million Capital Equipment. I think the Corporate Funds are borrowing, is that correct, Director McCarty?
No, not exactly. So it's $2 million that we're moving from the 12 million originally budgeted for firehouses. And that would leave 10 million, enough to do three. And then we would be adding 2 million in ARPA Funds, and the remaining 2.2 million, Mayor, is what you're thinking of. And that, that would be a loan, we would, which we would probably do and park in the Capital Equipment Fund.
Move for passage.
Second.
The move and second for passage discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. Next amendment is number 16, from Alderwoman Conley, from the Corporate Fund, $5,000 to create a contractual service line as needed with regards to increasing Corporate Fund to the Council Coordinator's office, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good.
I move to adopt.
Second. The move to adopt, and second, any discussion?
I just.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, it, it's not a large amount. I just want to kind of explain the thought process here. Should we need it, this gives the council the opportunity to enter, to pay for any sort of maybe extra outside consulting services we might need. The understanding is, is that any request to use funds from this $5,000 would have to come before the full council so that we would all know, you know, who's requesting it, what the amount is for, and what, what the purpose is. But, you know, if we don't use it, it goes back. I just thought, in lieu of some of the time delays we've had, or just some of the concerns people have had with questions or different things, at least this is in there as a placeholder, if we need it.
Alderwoman Purchase?
And just clarification, this is okay to have someone to overlook Corporation Councils.
I would not, this is not to overlook Corporation Council, absolutely not. No, that's not the point of this.
To review. You just said if things take too long.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is if we need extra, if we need extra services, if we want to, if, if that need should arise, because I know people have talked about it, now there's a line in there to, to fund it. If not, then we don't need it, so. But no, this would not be anyone who would overrule or, or anyway, oh, take over anything from Corporation Council. That's not the point of this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion passes. Next one, 17, is from Alderman Williams, from the Corporate Fund, for Public Works, for $100,000 to create a grant program to remove trees and branches from vacant lots and residents. Is that correct?
I move to adopt, second.
The move and seconded to adopt?
I just want to explain that this is a citywide approach. I, I believe there's lots throughout the city. And this also addresses whether the lot is a private lot or a city-owned lot. It, it really comes from me calling public work, saying, hey, I need you, you know, get that off that lot. And first thing they say, you know, we can't send our workers onto a, a private lot. But it doesn't eliminate my problem that I still have with that big branch down from the storm or, or whatever. This is different than us fighting with the county about the maintenance of these lots and, and why we're in this situation anyway. But some of these lots would be city-owned, some of them would be private, and some of them may just, and when I say private, I mean the county, they're on the record as the county, but we maintain them. Again, there's a different issue out there on why are we doing that and not getting paid, which is what I tried to explain to Alderman Gregory and others. And then finally, that citizen that's in her 80s, and the storm came, and the branch is down, and they're on social security, they just have no way of, of hiring and pay that kind of money to chop it up and get rid of it. So we want them to be able to apply for this grant and get that branch removed off of the lot, basically. You know, I have a few in my ward, I don't know if you guys have them in your ward, but that possibility would be there to help these elderly people or people that can't. I, I, I think we could probably work with the, the department, and, and if we want to add an income constraint to it, meaning a threshold for income, that's fine, too. I don't want it to be abused, it shouldn't be abused, but it is a need. So that's why I'm bringing this forward and asking for us to establish. It's very similar to the sewer, the sewer piece that's in under the water, the same thing. When, when we have floods, we can get, we can apply for these grants, they come and they plug around the pipes and stop the water from coming in and things like that, so.
Alderman Donlin?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alderman Williams, I think what you're trying to accomplish here makes sense. I think, obviously, we know we have problems, you've not been quiet about that. What I would encourage you to do is what I did earlier this evening is, if we could work at coming up with the specifics of the program and come with an ordinance that, you know, outlines the actual process in writing, not unlike, you know, the program that I was talking about earlier with the commuter slash college graduate attraction, where we come with it, and then we outline a funding source. And that way, it's, it's very clear. Otherwise, we're just, not that it's a bad thing, we're providing the, just the additional spending authority without the specifics. And I, I want to be in favor of this, I, I just, I think, you know, maybe if we do it that way, we could all be on board and happy to work with you on that.
You know, I, I want to take my chances here, I want to get this in the books. And then they may come back to us, maybe, and, and have a well-defined, you know, how they want to run it. Because that, I'll be honest with you, that's, that's administration. I just want to give them the availability and the possibility to have this so that I don't get answers like, well, you know, the unions don't like it when we send our guys on private lots. Okay, well, who's going to do it then? This line here is going to help us contract that little piece out to take care of that branch, that kind of a thing. And, and I agree with you, the particulars are not, are not all the way together. But as we have said on many things here tonight, we're just making it so that it's possible. Maybe we can require them to come back to us once they have how this would run, if that would help you, Alderman, you know.
Yeah, and then, and then secondly, it's my question to Mr. Harris, if you could explain what the process is presently when we have this type of issue, as far as, you know, when the complaint comes in, what we do, that would be helpful, I think, to hear. And I have not spoken with you about that prior to this.
I think what, good evening, what Alderman Williams was referring to is that we have several requests for trees and stuff to fall onto properties. And the issue he's talking about is that we are not allowed to, right now, by our workforce, to go on those private properties to cut those trees. A lot of times, those trees are averaging anywhere from about $1,500 up to $5,000 or more, depending on the size of the tree. So in a lot of areas, both all wards, from Ward 1 all the way to Ward 10, we have requests in which we have to literally just basically stay, it's on the owner's responsibility to take care of those particular trees. Now, we cannot go on to the grounds and stuff of property. So in this particular proposal, my understanding is, we're looking at working with the tree-cutting companies throughout the city of Springfield, and looking at gearing a program through our city arborist, which is Jeff Ring, to tackle that particular issue.
Alderwoman DeCenso?
Thank you, so is this just for vacant lots? I mean, I had, for instance, I had a neighbor's tree fall on my garage and do quite a bit of damage, but it fell on my garage, so I had to pay for it. That's the insurance laws, those are not, that's nothing a city ordinance can cure. So are we talking just about vacant lots, or are we talking about?
You know, I, I'm only talking about vacant lots when people say to me, you know, you require us to keep our grass cut and all this, but then we look over here and here's this lot, and, and, and the woman's in a nursing home. That, those kind of situations, you know. So of course, nobody's taking care of that tree that fell down way back, and I think they was telling me it was 2006 storm or whatever. That's how long, that big, and, and I'll be honest, guys, I didn't know how expensive tree removal or taking care of trees was until I became Alderman, and I'm like, wow, you know. So I'm just trying to help these kind of folks in these kind of situations out. But it wouldn't cover what you just described. I'm not trying to change any kind of current law or, you know, situation, so.
Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Redpath, and Alderwoman Conley.
I'm, I don't know, maybe it's, all the, all these ordinance, or all these amendments are starting to cloud my brain. I'm having a hard time grasping how this would allow us, or allow someone on their property to remove the limbs. I, I mean, you know, a vacant lot, it's still a private lot. I don't care if we're paying for it, if they're not going to let us on the, if they let us on the lot, that's a different story, but they're, they're still not granting access to the lot.
Well, I believe we're not talking about, I think the initial thought process in this coming from our City Arborists, not for us as far as our city crews to enter into those lots, but it's actually looked for outside.
But if we can't get on, what makes them give, have the authority to go on?
What'd he say, I'm sorry?
How does a private company have the authority to go on a lot over us?
I think what he's envisioning, I don't know.
We're contracting it.
It's just basically getting a contract through those particular private industries and stuff to go on to the owner's, owner's property in which they would contract out to get that. I think this is some type of assistance, supplemental type costs and stuff, to, so that the owner could have some resource, because it's a serious hardship for all 10 ward residents that don't always have the means to address those things. I think, from my understanding, Alderman was trying to put forth was a way in which we can supplant that particular hardship by having some type of grant program to address those concerns.
Alderman Redpath, Alderman, Alderman Conley, then Alderman McMinim.
And obviously, we can't go on private property, so it would be a contractual situation between, between the people who get the grant and the contractor, which would be a vendor, because we absolutely can't go on property, we'll have a liability situation no matter what we do.
Correct.
And I agree with one thing that Alderman Donlin said, though. I think we take it from this point, if we appropriate the money, that you got to sit down with Public Works and we have to figure out parameters for this thing, because it should be, it should be for people who can't afford it, should be for situations like that. So, you have to work it out. I really believe that there's a lot more planning to have to go into this.
Sure, sure, and I said that earlier, I'm willing to let them put it together and bring it back to us, I just want to create this line of money right now, because the one piece that has to be explained to me by the department is, right now, I have met with Mr. McFadden, and he had said to me, well Alderman, just because it says Sangamon County, you know, as the, I guess owner of the lot, I don't know how their names get on these lots, but their names on the lot don't mean I have to remove that. But then I still, as Alderman, have a problem, the branch is still there ugly, been there for years, that's another piece that we're going to try to get worked out on how all this works on, on who can get on what, you know.
Your intent is understood, we get that, it's just that we have to work out the parameters with the department.
Sure, and I'm for that, yeah.
And as I said, I think our City Arborists has worked with myself and Maybottom and stuff to try to get some type of proposal.
Yes, I have invited the arborist and his group, you know, to weigh in on this as we put this together as well, so.
Alderman Conley, then Alderman McMinim, then Alderman Donlin.
Thank you Mayor, I, Alderman Williams, I just, I would appreciate seeing some parameters to this. I think the issues I have in my ward, that at least had been brought to me, have been more, you know, this branch fell down and it's in my yard, it's not, it's less of a vacant lot issue, but I'll, I look forward to seeing the ordinance that sets up a program for something like this, because I, I guess I'm not quite sure. I don't understand why the city and county couldn't work together and have city crews go on property owned by the county, so.
Well, I mean.
I'm still confused about the problem, so I'll look.
Okay. Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, I support this because I think you're trying to clean up our neighborhoods, and this is a program where, it's a need-based program. It's whether the property's got a structure on it or not, if there's a problem there and the owner of the property doesn't have the funds, and it's need-based, we want to have a program to address that type of situation. So I think it's a good move, and it ought to get all our yes votes.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, Alderman Williams, I appreciate your willingness to work with the staff and bring, bring whatever program it is back, as long as, as long as we understand that we're not going to spend any money till we come back and we get to look at something and vote on it, I'll vote for it.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Have the, any other discussion? Because this will have to come back before the council, this merely appropriating the funds, and then we'll create the program, and then have to come back in an ordinance form. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Number 18 was removed.
Yep, 18 was removed, so number 19 by Alderman Donlin for the Corporate Fund, Officer of the Mayor reducing $80,000 and then, or supplanting it, I think, with Convention Visitors Bureau dollars, is that correct?
That's correct, and I, Mayor, I want to thank Communications Director for providing a good summary of what the intention of these dollars are for, and all this does is, again, transfers the spending authority to come from CVB. CVB, easy for me to say.
Me, yep, Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau. Any, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The movement seconded, any discussion?
Just discussion, I think our Communications Director does an outstanding job, and I'd hate to pull the rug out from under our Communications Director, she's got some good ways to use this money, I think she's in touch with what's going on out there, and I think you'd be wanting to consult with Tourism and Convention Bureau, but if this is your initiative to spend this type of money, I think we ought to respect that initiative, so.
Yep, Alderman, Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, just for clarification, I want to make sure everybody understands the intent. It would not change what is being proposed as far as what the Communications Director provided us, it just changes the funding source, she's still able to do exactly what was proposed. Thank you.
So it's not changing the objective, just the funding source?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
So the, the Communications Director would still have the authority to spend the money?
Yeah, I mean, that's, the mayor is the CEO of the city, and he, and has the ability to utilize funds that are within his authority, and one of those funds is obviously the Corporate Fund 001, and one is CVB, and this would not change anything but the funding sources, thank you.
Well, but we're, we're moving the money to a different department.
Thank you for clarifying that, that's exactly what I said.
So, so we're saying that a different director can spend money that belongs to a different director? I don't follow that.
Well, I, last time I looked, the Communications Office was citywide, thank you.
No, the Communications Office is within the mayor's office. It's not within Convention Tourism Bureau.
Which is citywide, if you look at the organizational chart.
No, the Communications Director works for the deputy mayor because a sister can't work for the brother, but that's the way the structure is.
Oh, I love Director Dolls here. Yep.
Come on up. Breathe a moment.
So, do you see any issues with this, as far as that goes?
Well, listen, I appreciate the intent, and obviously, when we're talking about hyper-local marketing, that's not what we do. We've said it over and over, we're a destination marketing department, we focus on the overnights, that's how we're funded. So, we're talking about 3% that we receive, 4% that the city receives from the hotel tax. The only issue I have is that our 3% is to be used for overnights, to attract people outside of a 50-mile radius, as established by the Illinois Office of Tourism. That's where we focus on. When we drill down to hyper-local, when we start spending money, whether that be $80,000 or local tourism grants, which I've said over and over, is we're not replenishing those dollars. So, we're just redistributing those dollars hyper-local. So when we start looking at just inside of a region, then all of a sudden, we don't have those overnight dollars. So, that $80,000 that we're spending year after year, all of a sudden gets reduced from fund balance, because we're not replenishing those dollars, if you're following me. So, that's the, that's the difference, is I've always said, I'm not against hyper-local marketing or local marketing, but I believe it should come from the 4% that the city receives from the hotel tax, which goes into the Corporate Fund, versus the 3% that goes directly into SCBB, because that's what we're using to market to overnights. And that's what's increasing the local hotel tax, which is eventually increasing the Corporate Fund or the 4%. So by doing this, we're essentially taking $80,000 from the 3% of the SCBB that we're not now using that $80,000 to promote overnights, we're using it to allow the community to know about events or what's going on inside the community. Again, still very important, but I believe that should come from the 4%, not the 3%.
Alderman Gregory.
I, you know, I agree with you, on the fact of room night stays and all of that, I think that the lady needs a budget to operate off of, we all agree she does a good job as far as what she does. In a sense, I get what you're saying, but, but, you know, for the people in Springfield whose families come and stay in the very same hotels, we, you know, we're telling our families about the great things that's going on in Springfield when we have those events. So I think it's important for, not only that department, but us and the entire city to make sure that everyone knows what's going on downtown, what everybody knows going on for Juneteenth, 4th of July, what you want to get kicked off. There has to be some balance, I totally agree that your budget highly depends on room nights and room stays, but, but the people of this city, many of the times, are the reason why people come visit, our families, people who have been through here for whatever reason, and I just think there has to be some, some situation to make sure we continue to cultivate that and cultivate that at a high level, and plus allow her to do her normal duties that we ask her about every day, and every Friday she sends those things out, so. I would support her, you know, I don't know about this bull, but I think she does deserve a funding source to do her job and, and to do more of the things that we're asking her to do, so, that's just my take on this.
Any other discussion? Alderman DeSanto.
So are you saying you're not in favor of this?
I'm saying, I'm not in favor of the hyper-local marketing, I'm not in favor of the funding source, I believe that it should come from the 4% and not our 3%, because again, that just diminishes our 3%, and allows us to be less effective when we're talking about destination marketing. That's the only thing, it's not the hyper-local marketing, it's not coming out of the mayor's office or the community, absolutely not, it's just where that funding source is. I just believe that our 3% should be protected for destination marketing and not local marketing.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'm, excuse me Mayor, I'm a little confused now, because there's two types of marketing, and he is saying that, you know, he's destination marketing, and then we have the, what you guys are referring to as hyper-marketing, and I'm of the opinion that we probably need both. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely.
But your problem is that right now, it currently comes from, from you.
Correct, and that, and that when we do the hyper-local, we do not replace those dollars. So if we spend, let's just say, $100,000 a year on hyper-local marketing, they're not replenishing themselves through the hotel tax. For example, when we do marketing for conventions, we know exactly what that convention is bringing in.
Sure.
So those conventions are bringing, let's say they're bringing $50,000 in hotel tax revenue or room nights that they're bringing through, we know that coming in, and that's what we want to spend our marketing on, dollars on, is bringing those groups in that we know are going to have overnights. But you think about, if you spend $100,000 a year for hyper-local and they're not generating those dollars, over the course of five years, that's half a million dollars. Our fund balance then gets replenished by half a million dollars. So, it's not just one year, it's five years down the road. When you look at SCBB and you go, wow, you had 100, 1.5 million, now you have a million dollars, or now you have $800,000, what happened? Well, that's because we weren't replenishing it, because we weren't doing destination marketing, that's, it's just a slippery slope, it's a real slippery slope when you get down that side. It's not that I, I still, you're right, I think that's very, very important, I'm just saying that the city receives 4% of the hotel tax that goes to the Corporate Fund. If you want to use that for marketing purposes locally, absolutely, I support that, you should have local marketing efforts, but it should come from the 4% that goes to the Corporate Fund, not the 3% that goes to the CVB that's really destination marketing. That's the, that's the only difference we're talking about here, I absolutely agree. Both are very, very important, it's just where are we pulling the money from.
So, Alderman Donlin, is it worded correctly, what you're attempting to do? Is that worded, like you would want it to be worded?
Alderman, I appreciate the question, Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
The intent, again, is to provide the Corporate Fund some relief and to distribute the funding sources between the two. Originally, I thought, I thought it would be worth asking for the whole $160,000 because it is new, it is a new funding request, and it was explained to me via the paper we all got, that, you know, it kind of looked at the, looked at the purposes of each one of these items that were listed, and determined that half could be applicable, and that's why I only asked for half, and I just ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, I think we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Let me straighten it out, no means, uh. Explain my vote, now I don't want to mess it up. We go on no, four, four to pass?
Yeah, if you vote no, it means you're not for the amendment, which would transfer the revenue expense side from the Corporate Fund, and you would take it from Convention Visitors Bureau. That's what the amendment states, is that we use Convention Visitors Bureau dollars instead of Corporate Fund dollars.
Yes. Yes.
Let me be clear on this. Yes means to take it.
From Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So if we want to take it from the 3%, we say no.
No, you would say yes.
Okay. So.
Yes means you take it from the Convention Visitors Bureau, Hotel Motel Tax side.
The Corporate Fund.
Oh, you want to take it out of the Corporate?
Right.
So you're a no.
Vote no.
Alderman Purchase.
I'm getting confused. Can you say it one more time? Right when he said that, I kind of got confused again.
Yeah, the motion for the amendment, if you vote yes, that means we're changing the revenue stream to fund $80,000, we're supplanting it, or taking it out of Convention Visitors Bureau Hotel Motel Tax dollars. Right now, it's budgeted in to take out of the Corporate Fund.
Okay, and then can you clarify one more thing? Scott said that he's against it, right?
Correct.
Wait, so if I say yes, what is that?
So if you say yes, you're supporting the amendment to take it out of Convention Visitors Bureau dollars, and that's what Director Doll does not want to do.
That's one half of the total.
What you said?
It's one half of the total, 160.
Okay.
But $80,000 would come out of Convention and Tourism.
Right.
Yes.
Alderman DeSanto.
Yes.
Alderman McMinim.
No, and I'm confused by how Gregory.
I think you meant to be no's on this.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
I think yes.
I'm not afraid of being confused.
Seven ayes and three noes, Mayor.
Thank you.
That mean it's coming out of the convention?
Yes.
Right.
It's adopted.
I did vote no.
We come back for a portion.
Taking money away from Scott is what we did.
Next amendment, number 20, is from Alderman Donlin for the Corporate Fund, and it reduces the, or takes out the funding related to the HR trainer. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I would like, if you, if we could, have the Director come up, and really, the purpose of this amendment is, I just didn't feel like we had an adequate explanation, maybe that's our fault, maybe it's everybody's fault, but I've had conversation with Mr. Cook about this, he's provided some information, just wanted to, let's provide everybody an opportunity to ask questions about this new position, so it's extremely clear, and then see where we go.
So do we need a motion for discussion?
Motion for discussion, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you.
Director, you go ahead.
I believe everybody received the information that I shared with Alderman Donlin, so, is there any questions about what this position is for?
If you could just provide a brief overview of the importance of it.
Okay.
That'd probably be helpful.
So, what this position is meant to do, is right now, we don't have any directed trainers for the city, so as we have supervisors retiring, we don't have anybody to help train any new supervisor. So as we have, uh, supervisors retiring, we don't have anybody to help train any new supervisors coming in on, um, policies and procedures, on leadership and management training. Uh, any of those types of things where we're having someone, uh, be promoted to a position. And we're basically telling them, here you go, figure it out. And what this is going to do is to help HR to be able to develop some programs to go out and, um, help these particular new supervisors do their job much better. And if they're doing their jobs better, it's going to help retention in the city. Additionally, we are, uh, going to be having a new enterprise system, ERP system for the city. No one in HR has expertise to help train, um, in this new system. Uh, we don't have the bandwidth. So as this system rolls out, there's nobody to backfill to, uh, learn the system from whichever vendor we're going with, to have a, a train the trainer type of thing where they can come back and share this information with, uh, people throughout the city. So that's, that's where we're looking at for the trainers position.
Alderman Redpath and Alderman Fugensi.
So for, when you put out, uh, proposal for a trainer, what kind of qualifications that person, they're going to have to be a jack of all trades, basically, right?
They will, uh, what I'm, I'm looking for in this particular person is someone that has the capability to teach in multiple modalities. So, uh, we want them to be able to teach online. We want them to be able to teach face-to-face classes. Um, looking for someone that has an educational level where, um, they understand this whole idea of, of human resource development.
But they have to have a variety of skills to cover every different department from firehouse to the public works, whatever.
Not, not so much, uh, getting down into individual, um, positions. Uh, safety training, CWLP has someone that does safety training. This position won't cross over into that. Uh, it won't be crossing over into, um, the training that the fire department needs to do. This is, uh, much more touching on the supervisors and, and the training in those particular areas that, uh,
Okay.
you're going to meet in that.
Thank you.
Alderman Fugensi.
We already have a, um, pamphlet, a book, a, a script to go by that describes the duties of the, uh, supervisors that's coming in. And that this guy would just have to, or a woman, would just have to.
We, we don't, we don't have any particular, um, we have some trainings available on our, um, employee system, ESS system, where a, uh, a new supervisor could go out and find maybe something that, uh, is now outdated, that's out there where they can watch this and hopefully get some ideas. So we do not have an actual booklet to say, okay, let's sit down and we'll go through and teach you what you need to learn. Part of what I will need to do with, uh, this trainers position is to get with the other directors, the other supervisors and say, what is it that you need in your area? What, when you have a new supervisor come on staff, what do they need to know?
Yeah, I would strongly recommend that you get with the director and develop some kind of a manual, right, so to speak, so that they can go by, this, this is what we have to develop.
Yes, I agree.
Alderwoman Connolly and then Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and I just have a quick question about existing training. So, I mean, I, I work for the state and I have to, you know, we have, you know, um, all, all sorts of mandatory annual trainings that we do. Uh, FOIA's, I mean, just, there's, there's a whole list. Do we have that for all employees at the city right now or what, what mandatory trainings do we have?
So, um, I don't have the list with me for the mandatory trainings, but.
But we do have that list.
But we do have mandatory trainings. Uh, we just went through the sexual harassment training.
Right.
Um, I put that together and put it online, uh, for everybody to go online and review that training. It's from the state.
So, okay, so would this, would this position though be someone who would be able to like update that sort of training and, and make sure, okay.
Yes, very much.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Again, Director, thanks again. Thanks for, uh, reaching out to me and, and explaining to me. Um, you know, I, I consider myself a reasonable person and, uh, but when I, when I hear the, when I hear Mr. McCarty, you know, give the present, budget presentation and you see one of the highlights that he, uh, emphasizes every year is the fact that the headcount overall has gone down dramatically over the last decade plus. And so when I see a new position, the hair on the back of my neck goes up and alarms go off. And, and, uh, I, I feel that you've done an adequate job of explaining the need. And, uh, you know, in particular with, when you described on the phone the other day about the relief that it would provide on existing staff in the department. I know that overall the, we once, at one time had more people. Uh, you've done a good job of explaining, in particular with the new ERP system and some of the additional responsibilities. Um, you didn't talk, uh, in depth like you did this evening about the, uh, uh, the likelihood of reaching out to the directors and, and, and helping mold that position. And, uh, I think that's a really good idea. And for that reason, I intend on withdrawing the ordinance with one caveat. If you could just keep us in the loop, uh, since it is a new position, keep us in the loop. Uh, I'd like to feel like we're all a part of it if it ultimately, uh, you do have a new person that's in the position. And for that reason, mayor, I'd like to withdraw the amendment.
Okay. Is there any objection to the withdrawal?
Thank you.
Wrong, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next one is amendment number twenty-one. Alderwoman Purchase, uh, with regards to the corporate fund and library for a hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars increase in corporate fund support to the library for the bookmobile staffing. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
Is this?
Alderman Redpath.
Sorry. Well, is this, uh, uh, going to be a permanent position or are we going to, how are we going to do this?
I think the acting director's here, she can explain the request.
I was, I was just wondering if it would be more beneficial to us to a contractual situation.
So, thank you for that question. Um, we do have a contractual position coming up. We grant funded for twelve months. Uh, when we look to a bookmobile, we hope that that is a forever process for our community. So this, um, these two positions for library one will staff permanently the bookmobile. So a contract position will be twelve months, um, and it's an outreach position that will get the ball rolling into us finding places that we can do pop-up locations at. But this, uh, these two positions will come on and then we do hope that they are permanent so that we can fully staff a bookmobile, um, for the future for the community.
So are you fully funded for the bookmobile?
So we are asking for it out of the Wagner Endowment, yes.
Alderman Hanhour.
Um, I appreciate, you, I appreciate the, the idea of the bookmobile. I think it's, it, that'll be very beneficial. The question I have is, do you have, you already have some vacancies at, at the library, correct?
Correct, and we're working on filling them, yes.
And were they, is, is there a reason why? Uh, I guess my suggestion would be, and I agree with Alderman Redpath. Since we're just getting it off the ground, why can't we take the bookmobile? And, and we, we get the bookmobile and we take some of that grant to, to hire a temporary employee to get it off the ground the first year, see how it goes, to see how many people we really need to staff it. It would be much cheaper than a hundred and seventy-three thousand. We're not paying pensions or anything like that. And then, um, in, in my mind, that gives you guys the ability to see, you know, kind of plan how, how you need to do things.
So a couple of things. One, um, when we were to staff it, a, a bookmobile is basically a mobile branch. It will have its own collection. It won't be that the librarian goes and grabs books from the library and puts it on each day. It will hold in fact its own collection. It will hold in fact its own reader services and in fact its own, um, hopefully iPads and all of the such. So we'll actually take a librarian one position to begin to do all of that. Um, when we establish the bookmobile, it's a hefty ask and it's a hefty thing that we're going for. We want it fully up and running day one that we get bookmobile. And getting the staff in place beforehand is vital to be able to get the bookmobile up and running because there's going to be a lot of legwork. If we get the bookmobile and we don't have the staff, because as we've talked about, the library staff is incredibly underfunded and understaffed, then we have a really fancy RV sitting somewhere. And that's absolutely what we don't want. So what we want to see is a fully excitable staff, ready to go when the bookmobile rolls into the city. And that's going to take the legwork and the meeting with the community, combining with the contract position for some time to build up what the community needs, consult what programming needs to be in the community and to all of the wards. So we want to see bookmobile staffed and ready to go day one. And so that's going to take getting staff in much before that and prepping, collection building, doing all of the work beforehand.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, um, and so you, you've kind of led into my question. Sure. How long does it take to get a bookmobile? So that's a good question. Typically, I mean, what we know is that we're having supply chain issues everywhere. So with cars going forward, I mean, typically you would stay between like six and nine months from beginning to outfitting to end. Um, where are we at right now? It may be a little bit longer than that, but, um, you know, we are going to be working with, there's a handful of places in America that do outfitting for bookmobiles. Um, but we also need to know what the community needs from a bookmobile. Do they, you know, it's everything from a van, a class A, to a class C RV. And we want to know what the community needs. Are they primarily need a mobile computer lab with, you know, as we go out? And that's primarily what these two positions will do because we know that the library is short-staffed. I don't have anybody else to send out. You know, I don't have anybody to start the relationships in the community who goes to your wards and does pop-up hours and begins to build where the bookmobile will go. I just don't have anyone to send and we're not going to, and, you know, at this point. But, so best scenario, nine months to a year? Cause I, I guess I, I would say I've had people reach out to me saying they would be surprised if it was more like twelve to eighteen months. Yeah, and you know, I mean, uh, maybe you have experts that you're talking to, eh, eh, as I'm making calls, that's where we're at. So, you know, eh, we could have. So I guess, I, I guess kind of like what, um, Mr. Hanhour said, if what you're looking at really is to develop how the bookmobile will look, um, that sounds like maybe we could more easily this year fund that with a contractual service. And then, and then when we, when we roll it out, it's, I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused. We, we've got the bookmobile in there and I'm, I'm, I know I'm very excited to see that. And it's, it's a benefit to the whole community. Um, I, I guess I'm confused as to why we're putting the bookmobile in there without knowing. I mean, if we don't know if we were going to have a van or an RV or if it's media or what, I, I guess I'm a little confused as to how we know what we're buying anyway. Sure. So we don't actually know what the bookmobile is going to look like, yes, that's true. Like we don't know what the actual bookmobile is going to look like. Um, and, you know, when I presented to you a couple of weeks ago, I didn't know that I would be here right now doing this. So, you know, it's, we are in flux. But what we do know is that regardless, it's going to need a couple of staff members. And those staff members, if we wait and fill it with contract positions, we can, but then we're losing that and we're losing the relationship with the city. We're losing the collection development because that is a specific skill. We're losing the beginning of building programs with the different wards already. So it is a both and situation for me. Okay, thank you.
Alderman, or Alderman Donlin and Alderwoman Descendo.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, just a question, when, when the department presented a couple of weeks ago, what was the plan with staffing the bookmobile?
So when the department, a couple of weeks ago, um, we were in a different spot. I was in a different spot. We had had a budget basically in place by somebody who is not here anymore and I'm picking up the pieces and moving forward. So my goal is to begin the process, but now we know what we need and we're moving forward. So what we primarily need to make a bookmobile work is an RV, that stuff, and the staff to do it. Because we, as we've talked about, are so skeleton staff that I just don't have anyone who can focus on this. And it will be part of my job as well and the assistant director's position. But we will need the staff to begin collection development, to begin programming ahead of time.
Right, I mean, so I understand the issue with the, the changes and all of that with, with, uh, of our staff. But so what I heard you say was there really wasn't an answer as far.
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Uh, I'm getting ready to just make a statement. I, I, what I heard you say was there really wasn't a plan.
Oh, no, there, yeah, there was no official plan.
I'm in favor of the bookmobile, I think it's wonderful. I think I said it a couple of weeks ago. But, uh, I understand also that the library has three vacancies presently.
Correct.
How can that factor into the equation? That's existing budgetary authority, that's not new budgetary authority.
No, that's correct. So we are filling those positions and those positions are much needed.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt that, but is there any way those three vacancies can assist with this process and kind of help things along rather than adding immediately two different or two new positions? That's what makes us.
Sure, so the.
That's what makes me nervous.
Oh, sure, so the vacancies are actually holes where people, where things are not getting done right now. You know, we have a, we have a position in circulation and that means holds are longer for the community. We have a couple of positions in adult services, so it means programs are not happening as much and people are working more time and, you know, are covering extra shifts in the evening. So the vacancies we, these we have are actually holes in services at the library right now.
Alderwoman Descendo then Alderman Donlin, or, uh, Hanhour.
Thank you, mayor. Um, isn't there a library board that can be helpful and also a library friends of group? Don't you have a friends of the library group that can also?
Sure, we do, we have both a friends and a foundation and we fully expect that they will be part of outfitting the, um, bookmobile. That's a, a ask that we are going to, but the, the staffing of the bookmobile and the staffing of the process of is something we see from the council that's.
But I'm talking about outreach.
Oh, uh.
Preliminary outreach that you spoke of before about going out into the wards.
Oh, sure, so we would love to do that, you know, eh, we get it, to be honest, it gets a little wonky with like volunteer and union positions, um, because outreach, and so we're working with that. Um, that's something we've looked into and it's something that I'm, like, getting volunteers to do some of those things is something I've looked into and I'm actually talking with the unions about. And as well as, you know, having volunteers with the bookmobile. But again, it will need a primary, it cannot be volunteer, it cannot be volunteer run.
Alderman Hanhour.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, we've had a couple of times tonight where we've had projects that have come up that, that just honestly, that they don't have a plan. My concern with this, and it's been all along, is, is that, um, what was presented to us was different than what, what now what the needs are. Number one, it, it doesn't look like we're going to get this until probably, if we get it at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be lucky. I don't see supporting, I, I can't support bringing in two people, um, two new vacant posi- two new positions. Not, you know, you're actually, we're adding two positions to the library, um, this year when, when it's not going to be in until next, you know, potentially next year. Um, the outreach, I, I mean, you, you're getting, I, I would hope that you would get the, the vacant positions that you have and that's going to just, you know, the staff's going to have to work on that. I would like to see a, a, a plan on how this is going to work. Um, you know, it, it, you know, I think that it's something that would be beneficial to the community, but we, we, I mean, we're going to get a bookmobile and we're going to staff it. That's, that's not a plan. And, and so, um, I, I was thinking that it, you know, for year one, if you had a contractual worker, which is cheaper, that, and, and if we had it come out of the, the grant fund, um, you know, that would be beneficial to get things up and running. But I, I can't, I can't justify two, two people this year. I, I just can't do it, so.
Alderwoman Purchase.
So I'm hearing from my colleagues that they're wanting to see a contractual person. But what I'm hearing from you is that a contractual person wouldn't be a positive asset because they're only doing it for a temporary timeframe and then they leave and then now you have to hire somebody permanent to still go into that, that RV or whatever it's going to look like to go out into the community, correct?
That is correct.
And how long would it take with the, you said you want to go around to all ten of our wards and you want to do like pop-ups? How long would that plan take that you want to have in place so that you can come back and have that plan he's asking for to say what the bookmobile will look like?
If we had the staff, we could do something like that in six months and have full pop-up hours in all of the wards. Uh, we do have. We do have a contractual person that we have made an offer to who will be beginning that. But yes, if we had positions, if we don't, it will, it'll be one person doing it who's contractual. So it'll be, you know, we'd say nine months.
Okay. And then my last question is, one of my colleagues asked, could the three positions that's already vacant, would those be just targeted to the library needs? Like what's going on in those areas?
Yeah, they absolutely are holes in services that need to be filled for us to fully function as a library as is.
So you couldn't hire those three and they operate the library and go out into the community?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I just wanted to have clarity for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Any, any other discussion?
I think you need a roll call.
Alderman Gregory?
I just want to say, I definitely think the mobile, I agree with everybody, I think our mobile bookstore is very, very important. There are some areas of our city that definitely need library services and, and, and I would be open to, to, you know, if Alderman Purchase, if you want to go with the contract, I get it, unless you still have to hire, but you know, I'm, I'm with it either way, whatever you would like to try. But, but I definitely want to see that, that we can be preparing for our mobile bookstore one way or the other, have somebody ready to go and we can bring that contracted person on for the full-time job or something if we go that route, but I'm supporting it either way.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
This is not the amendment at hand, sorry, this is not to the amendment at hand. I got a message from the deputy mayor to ask, apparently we want to close the library parking deck at eight and want to just make sure there's anyone in the audience who's parked in there.
Thank you, I was getting texts about that a second ago.
I think it was just coincidence.
No, I was getting, staff over there now asking.
Meeting's over by eight.
Okay. Mayor, you are an optimist, we still have.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Thank you, everyone.
So roll call, and again, the amendment is for increased funding for the bookmobile by $173,646 for staffing.
Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
I was a yes, but after hearing what we've heard tonight, since we're not going to have a bookmobile for most of the fiscal year, I think we just wait till next year. So I'm a no for that reason.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Six noes and four yes, Mayor, it fails.
Okay. Next amendment is from the Office of Budget Management, the mayor's office for corporate fund regarding police and community relations, and it's a technical change from a reallocation of the community outreach position from the police to community relations.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Then the final amendment, I do believe, number 23, from Alderman Gregory, for the corporate and ARPA funds from Office of Planning and Economic Development for $100,000, using ARPA funds for community revitalization grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With movement second, any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
Last one. So, so this, this actually mimics the final rule from the U.S. Department of Treasury on our ARPA funds. Recently, they, they just ended their final rule and, and where we can use our ARPA funds, so I asked for $100,000 to, for our OPED department to create what's called our, our community revitalization, revitalization grants. Again, this comes, comes directly from, from the U.S. Department of Treasury for, to promote improved health and safety outcomes such as parks, green spaces, recreational facilities, projects that increase access to healthy foods, neighborhood cleanups and, and other projects to revitalize communities. So what, what I wanted to do with this program is, is allocate this fund, come up with the fund where, where neighborhood groups, and I'm looking at this in all of, all 17 of our low and moderate income census tracts that touch mine, Roy, Alderman Fulgenzi, Keisha's, Ms. DeSenzo, Ms. Conley, a little bit of you, a little bit of you as well.
Just that much.
And it will go close to Alderman McMiniman. These, these are all federal guidelines on our low census tract. So with that in mind and hearing us all throughout the year of having different groups like Ms. Polly Popkins go out and, and move Pillsbury forward and people are really trying to help us out. And I think the only way that we're going to continue to move our, our, our city forward on the beautification side is with our community helping out. And while we have funds like this that, that have a, have a window for use, I thought it was appropriate program for us all. So that's what I said, thank you.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alderman Gregory, I, I think this is a great idea. I'm actually working on a similar kind of program at work. I, I just, I guess my question is, $100,000 doesn't, it's not a big chunk of money. So how do you, I guess I don't, I don't quite have your, hey, I only have one amendment this year, who knows, right? No, I guess I don't kind of, I'm not quite getting the vision of what you're looking at here.
So, you know, recently over the last.
Like, I mean, maybe, let me give you some, some questions just to kind of frame it for you. So are we, it's going to be a, an application process? And will it have to be like a neighborhood association or could like a, a group in a neighborhood come together and apply and, and will we have dollar amounts attached to it?
So, so yes, I was thinking anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 would be suffice for, for a group of people to go out and do what, you know, for instance, that moving Pillsbury forward did. So my goal, my thought process was with it is, is that groups and whether it's whoever from communities, neighborhood associations, et cetera, submit their plan of what they're going to do, how they're going to improve their community. And with that plan, whether it's ring doorbells, whether it's a community garden in, in certain areas, I got a, I got a, I got a lot in my ward that probably owes us $30,000 and it's just sitting there near Bun Park. We could, you know, I, I would love for the Bun Park Neighborhood Association to be able to get some help so they can do a little pocket park or, or et cetera, you know, in our, in our community. So that's really the goal for this, for this plan is, is really to help, you know, our community get out and help us out, you know, for some of the things that they do. So that's, that's what I was thinking at.
So they can buy supplies with it or, or, I mean, can, can people get, like can you pay people to go do door knocking? I mean, I, I guess, I don't know what the restrictions are.
It would just be more of a, you know, you had to submit a plan for, like for instance, when, when moving Pillsbury forward did the whatever many trucks on the north side in the Pillsbury area, they had to have people come out, not necessarily pay, but they had to use equipment. Some of them brought their own equipment out. We've, we've had another group go down Martin Luther King, they bring their own equipment out sometimes. So it just will give them the ability to really coordinate that better along with us. So that's, that was my thought.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, is this a reimbursement or is this, you just, we're giving them the money up front? And then if we are doing that, how, how do we guarantee the work, the work's getting done for what we're paying for? Things like that. I would, I would much rather see it be a reimbursement.
I like it. I mean, I'm good with it either way. I, I just, you know, some of the, some of the groups that, that do it, you know, are trustworthy, but you know, you're always thinking the other way. So I appreciate it and you know, for, for those thoughts. So I, I don't have a problem with the reimbursement. Many times we get into these low and moderate income areas, they really don't have, have it to fork out. So they, they're just out getting it. So I, I just thought, you know, this American Rescue Fund would, would be a way to give responsible groups in our community and trustworthy groups in our community some help.
Alderwoman Purchase.
If you do a reimbursement though, and they can't get the funds, then what are you going to do? Since he just said he wants to do it as a reimbursement, but we know in the low income.
That's what he want to do. I don't want to do that, but I, I don't have a huge problem with it and I understand where he's coming from with it, but I just more so think that we have an awful lot of responsible and trustworthy groups that will be applying for this money. And, and I don't envision us having that issue, but you guys have been here a little bit longer than me, so.
Can you maybe incorporate something like, you know, when you are turning in and asking to rehab a home, the bank might ask you for a scope of work. They may ask you to turn in a proposal and you have to include what those material costs may be, so it's broken down even more.
Absolutely. So what, what I want to do is allocate this money and then I want to have our, our economic development team work with them and, and everybody who wants for a good sound program for our city. And I think all of us have some great ideas on how to make it well and make it better, but I think it's needed for us, for us to set aside this amount for, for groups like that.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman, I, I actually, I think this should be something that maybe we do like as we develop maybe an ordinance and I'd be happy to work with you. I mean, this is something that I'm working on right now also, so.
Absolutely.
I'll be honest, when I saw the amendment, I wasn't quite sure where you were going with it, so I hadn't, I hadn't talked to you about it, so. But I'd be, I'd be happy to sit down with you and, and kind of draw up some parameters and, okay, thank you. And these would be low enough dollar amounts that I'm assuming, so planning and economic development would be controlling all the allocations?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I'm just going to say this again, Mayor. I know I've said it before. We need, we need a full-time director for that office, please, Mayor. I know we've got that in the budget, so that's, that's an important one, especially for things like this where we want to, we want to improve our community.
Yeah, we are efforting that approach, but we do have qualified staff down there as you all realize, I'm sure, but we're still working towards that.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I just would like to say to all the, when you guys are working on this, so I was thinking through my neighborhood associations and homeowner associations, I have both, but as they utilize their spring cleanup, fall, you know, they, they do a bunch of stuff, you know, and I, and I think this will motivate them, to be honest. It'd help whether it's something as simple as the leaf bags that they buy out on their own and stuff like that. If we think about the areas, because you know, frankly, not every part of Ward Three is in a association, so we don't want to leave those folks out too. And I know that takes us into other types of civic groups, but they still do good things and when you're making up how this is going to work, we want to make sure we're inclusive, you know? Yeah, no, no, no doubt, I agree with you 120%. It's just some, sometimes the, the funds that we use have these certain, certain things and you know, honestly, I learned that, that moderate income goes, goes almost to like $60,000, so you know, that's all right. I, I, I think that, that'll catch some, some extra folks, so I just wanted to make that.
Any other discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
So are we, are you going to come back with the ordinance instead of the, of the amendment? Or are we still voting on the amendment or how?
I would like to still vote on the amendment and then I believe much of this has to come back in ordinance form as well, where we'll actually have a, a good drawn detail plan for you, for everyone.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. And then amendment number eight.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to amendment number eight, Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory, I've got a request for you.
Yes, sir.
This has to do with amendment number 19, that was our communications director.
Yes.
I've looked at the paperwork that went with that amendment again, more carefully, and it's clear cut that it removes contractual authority, $80,000 of contractual authority from our communications director to our convention and tourism person. It takes spending authority away from our communications director and it's, it's spelled out, you know, besides our spreadsheets, we've got a separate sheet that explains each amendment. And I just call your attention to the fact that when you go to amendment number 19 on that individual sheet, it says, this amendment reduces contractual funding in the mayor's communications office and moves it to the convention center. So I think you both spoke up in, you know, supporting our communications director. So the prevailing side in a vote can ask for a revote, and I'm asking you that you ask for a revote and change your vote.
Come on, Joe, are we going to go through every?
Are you sure you're not doing it?
Hey, you've got stuff that you care about, this is something I care about.
Alderman Williams.
Are you sure you're not saying that backwards? Because I, I was, I truly want to revote Alderman Hanauer if what he just said is true, because my understanding was the, the other way around.
Alderman Redpath.
Director McCarty, can you explain that, please?
Well, that's why it has Donlin, what, what this language meant.
Basically, what this comes down to is the funding is moved from the corporate fund in the mayor's office to the Fund 21 SCBB fund in the SCBB office. That's what it does. It changes the funding source from corporate to SCBB Fund 21, the tourism fund out of SCBB. And.
And the spending authority.
Moves it department to department, but as, as Alderman Donlin pointed out earlier, the mayor's the CEO of the city's overall departments. So if he wants to, you know, indicate to Scott Dahl, Director Dahl, that, that money will be overseen by his communications director, he could do that. It's really, it's really a funding source question at this point.
Well, my question, I think to you, Director, is, but it, it takes away funds from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
No, it takes away funds from the mayor's office and moves them to Convention and Visitors Bureau.
No wonder everybody was going, what?
But I understood it, Chuck. And we support our communications director.
Alderman, if you look at the summary, it shows you negative $80,000 in the mayor's office and positive $80,000 in SCBB.
Exactly.
Mayor, if I can?
Could, could you come back?
I'm not going to let you make me feel like I'm slow. I was confused earlier, so I'm, I'm going to stick to that.
Mayor, the heart of, the heart of the issue again is I think we're overcomplicating it. It does not change the ability for the communication, the communications office to do the, the things that were outlined in the summary that we were all provided. It just changes the fund half, one half of the funding source from, and the entire eight, 160 being from the corporate fund to half of it coming from another source. Doesn't change the ability to do exactly what was outlined. I actually think what they want to do is wonderful. This, again, as I.
Leave the money with her.
Can I finish?
Go ahead, Alderman Donlin.
As, as originally was proposed, I thought, you know, why are, why are we doing this entirely out of the corporate fund? Let's change it all to CBB, it seems to make sense there. The summary was provided, that's why it's one half, and we voted and let's move on. Thank you.
My, my point is, the director just came up here and said it was going to be a negative impact to his department, is that right? Please come back up here and tell us again.
Yeah, Director Dahl.
Yeah, the way, the way I understand it is that we're going to have a negative $80,000 that we weren't planning on, the way that I understand it. Is that, is that correct?
It changes the burden of the, of what, what is being proposed from being entirely within the corporate fund to one half being from the CBB fund.
Yeah, so we're having 80,000 less to work with. And my, my only caution is that we're at, as we chip away at our 3% every year, that we're asking to increase visitors and overnights in the city to increase the overall local hotel tax with less resources. That's my only caution as we move down through this.
Right, and we had the same conversation regarding some of the grant funding programs that were initiated a few years ago and we've been careful about that. And anyway, I appreciate your perspective, but we voted, let's move on.
That's why I voted that way with you.
I have no problem with it coming out of the communications department, absolutely. It's just the funding source, that's it.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Fulgenzi.
This one, this question's for Director McCarty. As we stand right now with everything that we've done with the budget, what's our ending fund balance projected to be for next year compared to what it was?
So you had your calculator.
Plug that in, I've been doing, excuse me, didn't have that on.
Number eight, we'll fix it all, Ralph.
We can plug it in, but I can tell you that as of right now, I've been doing a running count with each amendment and our use of fund balance this coming year was introduced at $16,252,736. With the amendments that have passed so far, we've gone from 16.25 million, we're currently at use of fund balance at 17.4 million.
So tonight, we spent over a million dollars more than what's, what's been budgeted. We're trying to save some money from corporate.
We have one more ordinance.
That's right.
That's right.
And yeah, okay, so, but, but my point, that's my point. So it's not, it's not stopping Julia from doing her work. That's the point, that's the thing about this.
Alderman Fulgenzi, and then Alderman Williams.
I may, I may seem a little slow to understand. But did we vote to take the money out of CBB or SCBB or corporate?
It was out of Convention Visitors Bureau, is what we voted for.
Take the money for now.
Well, the funding source, but not the spending authority.
Correct.
Two things happening simultaneously.
So they are saying that the mayor is over both. So he's the CEO, so really he can dictate, is what they're saying. I'm saying, if I change my vote, I think it becomes five to five. And the same CEO would have to then break the tie. And we'll know exactly what his feelings may be on this. Because I truly did misunderstand until you brought this up and clarified that for me. I don't know about Alderman Gregory, but I don't know the process to change my vote.
Just make the request you-
Just request a reconsideration of the vote for Amendment Number Nineteen.
Yes, I would like to request for consideration on my vote for Item Nineteen to change it.
So are we doing a full revote?
Yep.
How's that work, Counselor?
If there is a motion, a motion must be made by someone who was on the prevailing side. It must be seconded, then it is voted on for the reconsideration.
Does the second got to come from the prevailing side?
Yes, sir.
So is there a second on the reconsideration?
Second.
Been moving second. All in favor, say aye. Or, I'm sorry, Alderman Conley.
I'm sorry, just a question. Alderman Gregory, did you vote for that amendment?
He voted.
He did.
Let's go, tell me, tell me.
I wasn't quite sure where we were on this one anymore. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Yeah.
This is for reconsideration.
A no vote, Chuck, please.
Now you would have.
No, if you vote to reconsider, right, is this a vote to reconsider?
If you, if you make a motion to reconsider, that's a procedural motion. It brings it back for discussion and a revote.
So we'll try to do this all one fell swoop. All for reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay.
No.
Nay.
I better roll call that. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory. For reconsideration.
What?
Yes, if you want to reconsider, you vote aye.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Oh, aye.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
Aye.
Alderman Purchase.
This is just to bring it back up and have another conversation about it.
Yep, to revoke.
Aye.
Yes.
Alderman DeSensio.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donaldin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Six ayes and four nays, Mayor. Okay, so we'll reconsider the motion of Amendment Number Nineteen. Is there a motion?
A motion for a revote on Number Nineteen. And a yes means that we keep, excuse me, a no means that we keep the spending authority with our communications director.
Is there a second to that?
A yes means we-
Okay, a second?
Don't burden the corporate fund as much.
So is there a discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Purchase.
I just want Alderman Donaldin to say it one more time for clarity. He said, "Where is it coming from and where is it being moved?"
Sure, as originally proposed, the entire $160,000 was coming from the corporate fund. As the amendment makes half of it come from CBB and half of it from corporate, therefore reducing the burden on the corporate fund does not diminish the ability to perform what has been outlined and discussed.
And then my second follow-up, like you said, the mayor is the CEO, so he gets to determine after we're done anyways what he wants to do with it. Right?
You could say that. It doesn't always work that way. Any discussion? Go ahead, Alderman McMiniman.
Again, this ordinance really does two things. It changes the spending authority from one communications director to convention tourism. And if, that's the part that I'm against. I think we ought to leave the spending authority right where it was with our communications director. She's allowed to spend that $80,000 for the appropriate purposes that she has in mind that were outlined in an email that she sent out earlier.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Again, if you vote for the amendment that splits the expense from Convention Visitors Bureau and the corporate fund, and it also splits the responsibility between the two departments. And what's that?
That's not, we're taking $90,000 of contractual spending.
See, he's confusing me when he does that.
Yeah.
Let's just vote, Mayor. I think he's had his chance to speak.
It's your sister, Mayor.
Yes, for the amendment. No, if you're against it.
Yes, for the amendment. No, against the amendment. Is that clear enough?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote. All right, Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes.
No.
Who votes how you want, Sean.
No, I'm tired.
So how do you vote, Alderman?
No.
No, thank you.
Jesus.
Alderman Williams.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
No.
Alderman Purchase.
Yes.
Alderman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
No.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donaldin.
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Five and five, Mayor. Although, no. No?
Now we got clarity.
I'm usually better than that.
So now it's Amendment Number Eight?
Amendment Number Eight. So just a little bit of background. This is the appropriation for firehouses. It was introduced, it would put aside 12 million for firehouses. Meanwhile, Mayor, you revised your proposal down to 10 million for firehouses, and we voted on that earlier. And so realistically, I think the, the way this is turning out, I think the most we can do in any one year is going to be two firehouses. So with that in mind, I'd like to keep enough money in here to do up to two firehouses. And we can think it through. And then in the following year, we can do another firehouse or two. But so my proposal, I'm changing my proposal to take out $8 million and just take out $5 million. So that would leave $7 million for construction and new firehouses. So is there a second for that approach?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Thank you.
Now can I have a discussion?
Okay, oh, just for discussion or for passage?
Um, Chief, can you come up here for a minute? So, you know, I know when we started this process, we were at 12 million and four houses. And over time, we've been kind of going back and forth or whatever. I think the latest is two. And then your equipment and apparatus, can you live with that or is that okay? Or would you prefer something different? I want to consider what your needs are.
I think that the mayor's vision on this was that while we have the money to go forth with three stations, that this is the right time to do so. I think that our people have the needs. Obviously, we have a lot of facilities that are 60 years old or older. I think that obviously we would put it to good use. But it's one of those things where obviously, yes, we could use three firehouses. We could use five, we could use five firehouses. But obviously, it's, we don't have unlimited funds here. So I think that, you know, I've been listening to all of you over the last couple of weeks, and everybody is asking the same thing. They want to make sure that we get everything that we can get. But at the same time, we don't want to run that bill up any more than we have to. And I understand the sides. I know it's not much of an answer, but I'm sorry.
So the 12 million, could we do three houses? And then you're the same thing you want as far as your equipment and apparatus with the 12 million? Or is that not enough?
No, actually, what it is, is 10 million right now for the, is left in the houses. The equipment's been taken care of.
Oh, okay.
There was $2 million that was taken out of the 12 million.
Okay, I'm finished. I forgot the equipment. It's a whole different-
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Fulgenzi, Alderman Purchase, and Alderman Conley.
Okay, so we voted on a lot of stuff. Have we voted on the firehouses yet? We voted on that.
Three, right?
It's in the budget.
For three of them.
Right, correct.
Okay, so this is a moot point. We've already voted on it. We haven't voted on it?
They're in.
They're in?
Right.
Oh, okay.
They're in.
I'm a little confused. How about, how about the, and we, so we did vote on the-
It was Amendment Fifteen that you're talking about.
If you amend it, then that reduces the number of firehouses.
Right.
So right now, there's funding for three.
All right.
So if we amend what Joe was asking for, then we're not sticking with what you did earlier for three firehouses, right? Because he's asking for two now.
Correct, the funding would be for two, if you reduce it any further.
But the equipment portion would stand, because that was a separate standalone amendment.
Right. Alderman Fulgenzi.
So what we voted on already will take care of the funding for three firehouses.
The way it is right now, correct. Alderman Purchase and Alderman Conley. Okay, Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I'm getting some feedback from constituents because we know Station Eight's being mentioned as one of the ones of these three that we've already, that we've kind of taken care of. And I would just ask, as we're kind of building up towards this, that we have maybe a working group with, you know, your firefighters, with you, with administration, with, and some people who are going to be impacted by this to get a really clear picture of where these stations are going to go and how that impacts the neighborhoods. I've heard from a number of people who are concerned about eight moving, you know, in older neighborhoods and wanting to make sure that they're going to still get that four-minute response time. So just, just so you know, I mean, as we're having these conversations, and I'm absolutely looking forward to you getting new engines, a new truck, at least the funding for three stations. But as we move towards that, let's make sure that this community is very supportive of our fire department for one good reason. It's that they've come to expect that very prompt response time. So there is a little, you know, what am I gaining, what am I losing from in my ward right now?
Absolutely, and just to address it really quick. Obviously, anytime that you move a fire station, there's going to be people that it moves closer to, and there's going to be people that are now farther away. And I understand their concerns. I hope that what they understand is that we've taken that into consideration. We've done a lot of due diligence. We did a lot of planning. We did a lot of GIS work. I can, I'm more than happy to provide the polygons as far as our response times by those moves. I will tell you that there, we will recheck our math. But previously, there were no areas in the center part of the city that were not covered by that four-minute polygon.
And that's really, Chief, I need to hear you say that in an open meeting because, again, my ward loves our fire department. I hear, I hear that all the time. But a big part of that is wanting that security of that four-minute response time, so thank you.
Sure, I'll get you that information.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderman Redpath.
Chief, this is a bold move for us. I've been on the City Council since 1987. I don't know that we've ever put this magnitude of a project together like this, building two to three firehouses, purchasing six engines and one ladder truck. This is historic, and it's important because this is going to really put us in a good position for the next several years, because I know we need more, but this is a pretty good jump. I encourage the council to vote this down. I think it's important that we leave the money where it is. I guarantee you that the chief and the mayor are discussing this every day, and we're going to get good results out of it. A third firehouse is going to be great if we can make it happen. But I asked the council to vote this down.
Any other questions or discussion? Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman McMiniman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that by increasing the, you know, with the equipment, which the chief has said, we've talked about bidding out, and I think that's the proper way to go. By going to three firehouses, I think that by bidding them out, we can get, we might be able to get them built cheaper, a little bit cheaper than what we would if we only built two or even one, because we might be able to get, you know, materials. I'm in favor of keeping the three firehouses. I think it's, I agree with Chuck. It's very important to this city. We've got areas in this, in this, I've got, I've got areas that they don't get to us in six to eight minutes. And it's just not fair to those people when we've got some firehouses that overlap to get to people in two. So I think we should reject this amendment and stay with the plan that the mayor and the chief has put together, which I think is, as Alderman Redpath said, a historic plan.
Alderman McMiniman.
I just want to compliment the whole City Council for working towards this equipment spending. This is a major improvement. Our firefighters need the equipment to do their job. And, Mr. Mayor, you've done, I think, a good job, because you had to revise your thinking on this, because the budget came to us with $0 for equipment. And now we're going to spend enough for six new engines and one new ladder truck. I think we're still overambitious with three firehouses. Not that, I think we might get to three firehouses. I think it's better for planning purposes, we focus on two right from the get-go. I think the southwest part of Springfield needs the attention, needs quicker response time. And as you and I spoke earlier today, Chief, you know, we've got a battalion chief that's going to become likely the chief of Chatham Fire Protection District. He just left our service in the last few months. And, you know, the Chatham Firehouse is two miles away from Piper Glen. Our Cokie Mill Firehouse is six miles away. And just as we've modified our traffic signals to get our rigs out as soon as they can on Route Four, you know, Chatham hasn't done that with their traffic signals yet. And that's something where we can work together with them to make things work for the southwest side. So I think it's a mistake to quickly spend money on something that isn't carefully enough planned out yet. And let's work with Chatham Fire Protection District to improve that coverage that we need on the southwest side. And I'm interested in the options that you come up with to do things in the most fiscally responsible way for our taxpayers. So whether this goes up or down, I'm satisfied with what's happened tonight on this amendment. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Call a question.
Second.
Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, over here.
There you go.
Just wanted to, over here.
Way over there.
Being late, over here. Just wanted to clarify, the amendment proposed was for $5 million. That leaves you $5 million, which is not enough for two houses, just as an FYI.
Well, let's just make it clear, what we're doing with this amendment, we're going to have-
Questions been called.
Okay, fine.
A roll call vote, one final time. Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
No.
Alderman Williams.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
No.
Alderman Purchase.
No.
Alderman DeSensio.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
A yes.
Alderman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donaldin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Nine no's and one yes, Mayor. Okay. So is there a motion to vote on the appropriation ordinance as amended with Number One, Two, Four, Five, Six, Ten, Eleven, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-two, and Twenty-three? Been moving second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. You want to do a roll call one final time?
Do the machine.
Or the machine, if the machine's up?
I'm going to get my thing back up.
Hold on. Yep.
How do you vote?
Are we allowing discussion on the ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me?
Are you allowing discussion on the ordinance?
Uh, yes. Yep, go ahead. Alderman McMiniman.
A no vote, because we're just going deeper into debt on the pension liabilities. And it's irresponsible, and I hope we have a better result a year from now.
Thank you.